All right, Happy New Year, everyone. It is January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and you are with us for the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission Monthly Voting Meeting. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and begin by asking clerk clerk to call roll for us.
Davenport.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Denson.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Handy.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I appreciate that. First order of official business is approval of meeting minutes from Tuesday, December seventh and Tuesday, December fourteenth. I'll entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the seventh and the fourteenth of December.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Edwards and a second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any written communications this evening?
No, we have none tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, we will have several opportunities for public input, given that this May twenty-fourth, we're going to have T-Splosts on the ballot, we're going to have, in just a couple of moments, a public hearing on T-Splosts candidate projects, we're going to follow that with public input on the consent agenda, on old and new business, and then, at the conclusion of the meeting, we'll have an opportunity for public input on any item not on tonight's agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and give staff to check to see if there's anybody in the chamber who'd like to speak to the T-Splosts candidate projects first.
Hi.
And just let us know your name for the record, and then you have three minutes. You may begin.
I'm Alan Jones, I live at one ninety-five Xavier Drive. I'm here to speak tonight in support of T-Splosts Project Thirty Timothy Road Bike and Pedestrian Safety Improvements, as you probably would have guessed. The the two thousand and twenty-three T-Splosts ask is for sidewalks or a multi-use path on Timothy continuing down to Macon Highway, intersection improvements, the gateway treatment at four forty-one, and additional crosswalks and flashers. We'd prefer the multi-use path. This is the alternate project version, which is about a third as much as the original ask. Yelliv already approved over one million dollars in funds from the two thousand and eighteen T-Splosts to be allocated to create the basically shovel-ready designs for sidewalk and multi-use path all the way from Mitchell Bridge to the end of Timothy. Abandoning Timothy now seems like quite a waste of tax dollars. All that said, I'd like to use the rest of my time to remind you of some of the feedback the T-Splosts Citizens Advisory Committee, which I'm on, received regarding this project. Of all the projects, it received the most responses. For the few projects that received over twenty responses, the survey tool generated a Word Cloud. This project had eighty-two responses overwhelmingly positive. Common yet telling words included equity, dangerous, multi-use, diverse, neglected, pedestrian, crossing, priority, connect, trapped, underserved, busy, needed, safety, thousands, gateway, speeding, transit, and residential. Here are a few of the responses, I don't know who the authors were, I just know they're not me. This area has been neglected by all splosts and T-Splosts. This is a dangerous area for pedestrians and cyclists. One, I'm mobility-challenged and confined to a scooter for transportation or an auto with mods needed. I cannot leave my subdivision safely because there are no sidewalks. Another, I live off Timothy Road with two children under the age of four. Sidewalks would allow me to walk them to the elementary school when they're of age and give us the ability to enjoy walking outside without having to drive to a park. Another, I strongly support this project. It will alleviate many of the safety concerns for the thousands of people living along Timothy Road. Currently, it is impossible to walk, bike, or use large portions of Timothy Road in any other way but by car. People who want to leave their subdivisions and use this corridor on foot or bike face immediate and real danger from the nearly constant motor traffic on Timothy Road. Similarly, access to the Athens Bus Service at the end of Timothy Road close to Loop Ten is virtually impossible. Please support Project Thirty without any reductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Is anyone else here in the chamber to speak to the T-Splosts projects?
Mara Zuniga.
Good evening.
Good evening from Winterville. First, I'd like to thank, I'm going to talk on item four on the agenda, Project Six Firefly Trail. First of all, I'd like to thank the part-time and full-time government employees, the staff who came into work today. Unlike the commissioners during the Christmas week who had formally requested a hundred percent wage increase to be put in today's agenda, when most citizens aren't really back from the holidays, you may say that you are meeting WebEx because of COVID, but I see it as a smart decision not to have faced the public after this disingenuous act. Give your staff, who is overworked and underpaid, a hundred percent increase first, and give your part-time workers benefits. You have medical and dental benefits even though you are part-time. With that same spirit on item four, why is Winterville getting more and more money for the Fire Trail? Or anything else? I've lived in Winterville for sixteen years. Compared to the other neighborhoods, it doesn't need anything. A nice old town that now has a lot that has been taken over by young white liberals who seem to be linked to the same crowd of people making money decisions for Winterville. Do citizens who continue to vote for the same crowd not to see that poverty hasn't improved over the many years here in Athens? But the finance of some of these white liberals has changed? Why not focus money for the many neighborhoods that have requested basic needs like District Two? Some people there have angrily stated that they don't understand why they can't get everything on their T-Splosts list for many years. I don't understand why people in those districts can't get the things that are on their T-Splosts when places like Winterville that I personally see has been increasing, getting more lights, getting more pavement, getting nice roads. Why can't those other neighborhoods get their basic needs? I don't understand that. Who do people have to speak to within the little circle that you guys hang around with to get those basic needs going? I don't get it. You know? So please, look into into those things and also giving that wage increase to your staff. I really think that part-timers would benefit from those benefits that you guys have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Is there anyone else here to speak to any of the T-Splosts candidate projects? Again, T-Splosts candidate projects. All right, seeing no others for T-Splosts, I did want to provide an opportunity for commissioners to provide any feedback on the coming T-Splosts program, given that we've had some conversation about this in November and December, and that we're going to be moving toward finalizing those projects that are going to go on the ballot, that are going to be in front of voters on May twenty-fourth. And so if any commissioner would like to provide any sort of global thoughts, really not so much kind of granular stuff about project by project, but any sort of package-wide thoughts, I'm going to provide that opportunity now. See, Commissioner Myers, then Thornton and Denson, and then Link.
Hi, okay, hear me good?
Yep.
Okay, great. I shared the other day a draft, total draft, total sort of grouping of similar ideas together with the idea of putting a bunch of the projects into buckets, mostly because of the opportunity we have to get federal funds that may be available to pay for some of the projects that we have on this T-Splosts list. By putting them into some buckets, for example, I shared some draft language where you would have East Athens Transportation Improvements to include, and then list the actual projects that are in there with a phrasing at the end, in addition to other projects, as revenues and budgets allow and as identified by the community. And this is just a draft idea, this is no, this is just a starting point. I had buckets for North Athens Transportation Improvements, East Athens, Lexington Corridor, essential infrastructure, Greenway and Parks, and I believe Bike and Sidewalk and Accessibility Projects, as well as Transit. And so that's, those are the ones that actually put some groups in there as well. So I just wanted to throw that idea out there, and this was just a starting point. If anyone else wants to work with me on this kind of idea, we can. If people aren't interested, you know, we don't have to, but it's just something out there to start us off with. I also would like us to address somewhere before we vote on the T-Splosts, how we are going to do the funding for pavement, whether or not we're going to have money. I know there was about someone asked last time about a new estimate of the T-Splosts, and there was about another, what was it, ten million? These numbers are so big, dollars. And I was thinking that might be a starting point for the pavement, and maybe we can find some others. But I feel like to be responsible, we have to either have an agreement among ourselves about we're going to put the money's going to come from the general budget, or we need to find room in here. Those are just my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Myers. Commissioner Thornton?
My only question is just clarification. When I looked at the calendar on on the website, it stated that there was a T-Splosts input meeting January the sixth. Unfortunately, I did not open the link up to get the details. I would like for someone to explain that for me and those that may be listening, because I do know if some people just looked at the calendar, they may not have known that there was going to be input tonight. So I just wish someone could kind of explain what the difference is for January the sixth.
Manager Williams, do you have some overview of that meeting?
Let me look up what Commissioner Thornton's referencing on the website. If you go ahead and take another question, I'll come back, come back to me, please.
All right, I'll move to Commissioner Denson, I'll get back to Manager Williams in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. My only suggestion I'm going to throw out there now, which we have been talking about a little bit, has been to create a bucket around corridor improvements. And basically, at this, yeah, yeah, we're going to give them to an amount. At this time, we added all the corridor improvements together, it's about thirty-seven million dollars, that's just where it's at right now with. But and to have that bucket be including West Broad, Atlanta Highway Corridor, Timothy Road Corridor, Lexington Road Corridor, Prince Avenue, and Jefferson Road Corridors, and just putting all those in there so that we can be able to move forward on any kind of necessary safety improvements on all these corridor improvements, rather than be stuck only with a select few, when we know that so many are necessary in there. So that would be my suggestion. I'm happy to try to work with folks to coach the correct amount for that kind of bucket. But other than that, I'm pretty happy with the list, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Denson. All right, I've got in order Commissioners Link, Parker, Davenport, Wright up.
Mayor, I can, before we get too far away from Commissioner Thornton's question, so yeah, that that actually is a separate public input forum hosted by the Advisory Committee via WebEx, and so that link is on the website that folks can go to.
So folks go to ACCgov dot com, they'll find the link to that.
It's at six p.m. on Thursday, January sixth.
So is that, and I guess since you had to look it up, you probably don't know what that would entail, so maybe I can get more information from Lauren or somebody?
Well, I was just verifying, you know, what will happen, there'll be a short presentation by staff of the same information that has been provided tonight as part of the agenda packet, and then they'll take comments.
And then do we get those comments back to the commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And while we're there, I believe there's another one the following Thursday at six too, so we have several of these that are happening for folks to.
Okay, and I think that's the one I had heard about, but all comments should come back to the commission before we go to a final vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll share the share the results of those meetings with you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, y'all. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Denson kind of read my mind when talking about corridors. I would like to see us have some kind of bucket that it has some flexibility to it when it comes to these more high-traffic, high-speed corridors. We had another pedestrian death last week, this one on North Avenue, and that is a corridor that has not been formally studied. And from what I understand, the funding, the federal funding that we had hoped to get for it has been denied. So I feel like we have corridors that have not undergone that formalized study that actually like, you know, essentially qualifies them to be considered for T-Splosts projects. So I don't know that the studies actually can be funded by T-Splosts. Manager Williams, is that allowed? Are we allowed to use T-Splosts funds to fund studies? Or is it just the nuts and bolts and pavement and stuff?
Well, you are allowed to use some T-Splosts funds for studies and design work, but they're usually associated with the project, and the intent is that the project would be subsequently built or complete.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, the Prince Avenue Corridor study stopped at, I believe Hawthorne, where, you know, the the real need at this point is for improvements on the outer part of Prince Avenue and Jefferson Highway. That's where we're seeing really dangerous fatalities. So we need a new study to go beyond the in-town Prince Avenue Corridor. We definitely need North Avenue and Timothy Road echoing the concerns about Timothy Road. That's a really densely populated residential area. You don't really realize it because the neighborhoods are tucked off the road, but it's also highly connected to schools and shopping, and it's important that we start making plans to make these corridors safer for pedestrians and cyclists.
Well, so just to refine what I said, so studies can be funded by T-Splosts that result in capital improvement. So for instance, if you said you wanted to do pedestrian improvements in this corridor, and you put a bucket of money, to Commissioner Myers' point, you could fund the initial assessment, design work, and then go ahead and build some portion of that study or master plan, if you will. That is all eligible expenses.
Okay, yeah, I would like to talk with Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Denson about that funding possibility.
All right, I've got Commissioner Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to start off by commenting on the idea of buckets. I am supportive of buckets for corridors, but I would hesitate to support a bucket approach for neighborhoods, particularly ones that have put forward a significant number of community-driven proposals akin to East Athens, for an example. I think that residents of that area in particular, and I imagine many neighborhoods that put in proposals are very intimately familiar with what the needs of those neighborhoods are, and so honoring the requests they have made for funding levels and project descriptions that they have put forward, particularly in areas where folks have historically been under-invested in, is really important to me. So if we are to approach the topic of buckets with an eye towards, you know, looking more generally at corridors, for example, but, you know, honoring the more neighborhood-specific requests, I would, you know, be most comfortable with that, but I'm open to talking more with y'all in the next month or so about the benefits of a potential bucket approach. And I just also wanted to reiterate something that I brought up in our December seventh or fourteenth meeting with regards to the historic signage proposal, and have spoken to the applicants about potentially expanding that proposal slightly to include not just historic districts but a historic neighborhood that does not have, or does not, from my understanding, you know, desire historic district designation status, but is significantly threatened by gentrification right now, and so honoring and trying to preserve both the history of the district and ongoing awareness of its sense of identity through that. So expect me to bring forward some small changes to that particular proposal between now and our vote on the final project list. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Parker. I'm going to move in a second to Commissioner Davenport, just so everybody knows, I've got Commissioners Wright, Handy, and Cool who will speak after that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I want to thank my colleague, Commissioner Parker. He pretty much said what I wanted to say, but a little differently. I'm not a big fan of buckets because it kind of delineate, not delineate, excuse me, kind of dilutes some of the work that CAC put forth and what staff have worked hard on and what I think is somewhat confusing to the general public when they go out to vote on what they're actually voting on. But our, you know, our residents worked really hard for months to finalize their list, and, you know, from day one, I've always said that, you know, we need to fix what's broken, and we've had CARES Act funding, that ARC funding to fund some of these projects, and now, going to T-Splosts project, T-Splosts two thousand and twenty-three, we want to, you know, do buckets, when we had opportunities in the past to fix our corridors, to fix some of these potholes and street management, street payment. Also, as well, we've got infrastructure money coming down from the federal government, and hopefully, you know, funding through the state, we get a good chunk of change from from that, where we can actually fund some of these projects that we're looking to fund. But, you know, I'm not too heavily big on buckets, but at the same time, I think staff and our residents worked really hard, and what they're presenting to the public is really solid, and just doing a bucket is pretty much saying that we're doing pet projects for ourselves, for other projects that, you know, staff and our residents didn't.
Thanks, Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Wright?
Thanks. I think that, I think the concept that I agree with us is making categories or making sure when we have overage, as far as the income that the T-Splosts is bringing in, to make sure that there are other topics to be able to be improved on. So the buckets, to me, are more like categories of public safety. So if there's an area that gets a safety audit, not because of issues like Tallahassee Road, I think, you know, we had a bunch of accidents there, and that had the safety audit, and if they come up forward with a conclusion of a solution, we, I was hoping that we would have a bucket on that type of topic, that we could then execute a solution. So not to dilute the details of what we have in our packet and what's come through the committee, but to make sure we can fund an opportunity and a solution. And I think public safety can be a category that wouldn't be necessarily a pet project, but it's solving an issue. Some of the details that I need, and I apologize if this has been sent out already, is that for me, the T-Splosts projects, if we could have the list to show us which ones would qualify for either state level or local level American Rescue Plan funding, because I think that that can help us understand funding options, so that if there's things on our T-Splosts that can be funded by other buckets of money, other funding sources, then that can allow us to do other projects in T-Splosts that don't fit that. And then the other thing that I think is important as we assess T-Splosts and the ARC money is that we need to learn about our new poverty census tracts, just where geographically those are from our new data, because that is also a priority for the American Rescue Plan. So that could have projects that are listed on T-Splosts that are in the new or existing or, because we haven't learned how that plays out census tracts. I think that that detail's also going to be needed to help assess. So I mean, if I'm Manager Williams, I'm looking for those kind of details that can, as we move on, to help synthesize. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Handy?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. And I'll be, I'll be brief. I was just going to piggyback on some of the, some of the bucket stuff, and I don't disagree with the bucket stuff, but I think we ought to be mindful of the public input that comes in, in the work, like Commissioner Davenport has said, about the Citizens Committee and making sure that whatever in the, whatever in a bucket is delineated from, from those projects, so that, so that there are the folks who worked on those and submitted them and the Citizens Committee and the system input recognize them as they go to vote. So I don't mind that, but also understand having a bucket approach allows for the flexibility that we may need, you know, five or so years down the, down, however, this was a five-year Splosts, so hopefully it won't be more than five years. But, you know, next year, there may be a high need somewhere that we need to shuffle some stuff around, so buckets allow, afford us to do that. So making sure the buckets are well-defined, making sure that the flexibility's there, but also, let's look at, you know, like Commissioner Wright is saying, where some extra dollars are coming from, because I heard Commissioner Denson talk about corridors, and I heard two new corridors are there, and that's, and that's fine, but if there's additional corridors added, there needs to be some additional dollars added to the, to the bottom line of it. I will say this, you know, look, and piggybacking on what Commissioner Wright said, if there's, you know, for example, Atlanta Highway has a tad associated with it around the mall area, so looking at how that plays into future infrastructure build-out is important. Also, as, as, you know, things along Atlanta Highway are developing, as you've seen, just recently, they've put up a new sidewalk in front of Classic City Bank near the Omni, what used to be the Omni. but it's solving an issue. Um, some of the details that I need, and I apologize if this has been sent out already, is that, um, for me, the TSPLOST projects, if we could have the list to show us which ones would qualify for either state level or local level, um, American Rescue Plan funding. Because I think that that can help us understand, um, uh, funding options. So that there, if there's things on our TSPLOST that can be funded by other buckets of money, of other funding sources, then that can allow us to do other projects in TSPLOST that, that, that don't fit that. And then the other thing that I think is important as we assess TSPLOST and, um, the ARC money is that we need to learn about our new poverty census tracts, just where geographically those are from our new data, because that is also a priority for the American Rescue Plan. So that could have projects that are listed on TSPLOST that are in the new or existing or, uh, because we haven't learned how that plays out census tracts. I think that that detail is also going to be needed to help assess. So I mean, if I'm Manager Williams, I'm looking for those kind of details that can, as we move on, to help synthesize. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Uh, and I'll be, I'll be brief. I was just gonna piggyback on some of the, some of the bucket stuff. And I, I, I don't disagree with the bucket stuff, but I think we ought to be mindful of, of, of the public input that comes in, in the work, like Commissioner Davenport has said, about the Citizens Committee and making sure that whatever in the, whatever in a bucket is delineated from, from those projects so that, so that there are the, the, the folks who worked on those and submitted them and the Citizens Committee and the citizen input recognize them as they go to vote. So, so I don't mind that, but also understand having a bucket approach allows for the flexibility that we may need. You know, five or so years down the, down, however long this, what's a five-year SPOLOST, so hopefully it won't be more than five years. But, um, you know, next year, there may be a, a high need somewhere that we need to, to shuffle some stuff around. So buckets allow, afford us to do that. So making sure the buckets are well-defined, making sure, uh, that the flexibility is there. But also let's look at, you know, like Commissioner Wright is saying, where some extra dollars are coming from. Because, uh, I heard Commissioner Denson talk about corridors and, and I heard two new corridors are there. And that's, and that's fine, but if there's additional corridors added, there needs to be some additional dollars added to the, to the bottom line of it. I will say this, you know, look, and, and piggybacking on what Commissioner Wright said, if there's, you know, for example, Atlanta Highway has a tad associated with it around the mall area. So looking at how that plays into future infrastructure build-out is important. Also, as, as, you know, things along Atlanta Highway are developing, as you've seen, uh, just recently, they've put up a new sidewalk in front of Classic City Bank near the Omni, what used to be the Omni Club there, it's now Athens Fitness. Uh, and they'll put another sidewalk that connects to Sycamore Drive, I believe, on the other side, or Broccoli Road, rather. So, so as new development or redevelopments taking place, there's also sidewalks being built along these commercial corridors, not necessarily along the residential corridors, uh, from, from that standpoint. So just, uh, Blaine, or Manager Williams, whatever, uh, help you can give us in figuring out, you know, what's, what's, I know there's a big development happening on Timothy, corner of Timothy and, um, and, and, um, Atlanta Highway. At the, at the, near the gas station there, they're redeveloping the gas station too. So I don't know if it'll qualify for a sidewalk or not, or, or if they're doing enough to trigger the sidewalk thing. But I say all that to say, if we're adding corridors or adding something, we need to find additional dollars uh, to, to supplement those extra, extra stuff within the buckets. Thank you. Or find out where we can save some money. That's all. Thanks.
Move to Commissioner Hool.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a side note, I'd like to remind colleagues that the chat is not visible to the public. So if you're sharing thoughts pertinent to this, it might be worth sharing them aloud.
I think it is, isn't it, uh, visible in the public?
Not, not really. It, it sort of fades pretty quickly.
Oh, okay.
I would discourage use of the chat in, in this form, sort of equivalent to passing notes.
So I like the idea of buckets, but echoing colleagues that have already spoken, I have concerns about how those buckets can dilute or pull away from specific projects. And so, um, this is kind of reiterating an idea I put forward before, and I'd love to collaborate with Commissioner Myers and anyone else who wants to on how this can look specifically in language, because ultimately we have to work together on actually writing this out, hashing this out in a document. But I think it's important that we stick with this project list. And then if we want to add projects or buckets, I'm open to that. I think we should be careful and deliberate about where we pull the funds from to fund those buckets. Um, I think that can mean shaving off amounts from some of the projects that would be specifically relevant to them, and then using the kind of language that Commissioner Myers is suggesting. And then it's just there for, um, for something else, if and only if those other projects are seen through, or to fully realize those projects if that's what's needed. So I guess I'm thinking of buckets as something that would exist as sort of a supplement to this list, um, rather than a way of amalgamating the list, if that makes sense. And then, uh, just, I, I heard studies brought up, and I, I just want to point out that we already have a lot of studies that have not been seen through, that have informed some master plans that I think are quite good, that have not been seen through. So I'm, I'm reluctant to see this as a, see a big need for funding more studies for some of the roads like Mitchell Bridge and things, when we still haven't fully realized the, the roads that those would feed into. Although we do see a need, obviously, in some neighborhoods, and I think a lot of those needs that have arisen from the community are what's on this project list. And that's been deliberated honestly, very extensively, I think more than any of us can pretend we could, by the advisory committee that we appointed, and I think we've got a really good list to work from. So all that to say, in summary, I love the idea of adding buckets. I think it's important to have those there as placeholders for if we can get some of the other funding sources that Commissioner Wright pointed out. Um, and it allows us that flexibility without having to know everything now in advance. It doesn't require us to predict the future super specifically. Um, but I do think that we should treat those buckets as just a minimal amount, as a placeholder amount for now, with a broad description. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Hool. Now move to Commissioner Edwards, and then circle back to Commissioner Thor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, within this discussion that I, that I didn't really predict we would be having about what a bucket is or is not, I, I think we need to first maybe hear from our attorney or the manager regarding the way TSPLOST funds are collected and spent. If we do have a TSPLOST ballot initiative with a project, what happens if that project is subsequently funded with federal dollars? So Attorney Drake, I'd, I'd pose that question to you. I think we need to figure that out before we go down this road creating buckets. I, I don't, I mean, what's a bucket? What are we even talking about? You know, let's figure out what happens with these funds if what is with our TSPLOST connections, collections.
So if I might, Commissioner Edwards.
Go ahead.
So, a, a, and just for the benefit of the viewing public too, so in the pa, past SPOLOST and TSPLOST referendums have usually been a mixture of both specific projects and what we're calling buckets. And buckets is, for instance, pedestrian improvements. So they don't have named, um, projects per se, or sidewalk improvements, or, um,
Traffic calming devices.
Or, uh, school improve, you know, uh, so, and what that does, uh, the buckets give you a little flexibility as a governing body to adjust to whatever needs happen over the ensuing years. You know, and, and there's usually a very, um, you know, user group-driven process, recommendations made to the commission, the public is in full view. Um, I don't think any of our SPOLOST have been all buckets or all specific projects. I think, you know, that the voters have wanted to see some very, you know, there, there are some specific things that would happen with some of the funds, so it's usually been a mix of both of those. At the, and I'll defer to Attorney Drake here, but to answer your first question, Commissioner Edwards, you know, those project descriptions are very key as to what, uh, we need to produce as a government, one way or another.
No, that's, that's a good explanation. I mean, pavement maintenance, that's a bucket.
That's right.
Traffic management program, that's a bucket.
That's right. And you would assign the priorities and, and the mayor and commission would approve the ultimate projects for funding out of that bucket.
Okay, thank you. I think that's helpful. And then, I guess Attorney Drake, whenever you, I don't, I don't trust you to get there, I don't expect you to have that answer right off if you do, but.
And, and the question, Commissioner Edwards is, once it happened, if like we supplant prospective local expenditures with federal funds.
That's right. If we have a project on a TSPLOST list, but then it gets funded with federal dollars, what happens then?
Okay, I'll be glad to take a look at that.
Yeah, thanks, Attorney Drake. All right, that's it, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna circle back to Commissioners Thornton and Myers.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I think one of my questions, I think, um, Commissioner, what is it? I think answered, uh, Commissioner Edwards about, uh, federal dollars and what happens. And I, I just got a text, uh, from someone, I guess, that is watching, and they oppose buckets for, uh, for projects that were not recommended by the, um, by the, uh, TSPLOST, uh, working group. And I totally get it, but I do want to say that I know that North Avenue, um, did not make the cut because they were anticipating the, uh, the RISE grant. And, and of course, we didn't get it, um, but there's a, a, a big need because of, of the fatalities in that area. So while I do not totally agree with buckets, uh, I do think that we could have an alternative plan, especially for those areas that are, I'm not suggesting adding anything new, but for those areas that were presented, but we were anticipating, um, another source of funding. Which leads me to my question, uh, County Manager, uh, Williams. Do we have any closer idea of how much or when the infrastructure money is going to come this way?
No, and in fact, um, we, we are, uh, looking for a briefing on that. Jacobs has offered that to us, uh, from some of the intel that they have. Of course, the Build Back America, uh, infrastructure bill stalled right now. The Immediate American Rescue Act funding from the state that, that was offered later last year was specifically for broadband water or sewer, potentially, you know, and stormwater as well. So, uh, we are, to Commissioner Wright's original request, gonna be searching for a synopsis of that to share with y'all.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to, uh, clarify my little chat message that the only reason for putting items that previously I wouldn't have suggested putting in buckets, like the North Athens or East Athens, is so that we can do more in those neighborhoods of federal funds pays for the projects already listed there. And so I, I would only want a North Athens or East Athens bucket if the resolution language still included the specific projects already chosen and if the specific projects budgets would be guaranteed. So this is, this is only a device to use because of unanticipated or are not knowing about the federal funds coming through, and an opportunity to put more into those areas than is actually, um, in the list right now, um, if federal funds pays for some of those items. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just, uh, what I had put in the chat, just to go in there, I was, um, mentioning that I agree with Commissioner Myers that we do need to have a discussion on pavement maintenance. And if we are going to fund that with TSPLOST, then obviously we gotta find a lot of room and make some changes. And if we're not gonna fund it with TSPLOST, then we need to state how we're gonna fund it. Um, we all received, uh, the email from the manager, uh, on Friday, in which it lists that basically just to achieve the status quo right now, uh, over that same five-year timeline, it's gonna cost just shy of $31 million. And if we were to do, uh, what staff has called the triage funding for pavement maintenance, it's gonna cost $21,400,000. So I'm not saying obviously here that we have to do that with TSPLOST, but if we are going to choose not to use this funding source that has been used in the past for pavement maintenance, then we need to go ahead and say what funding source we are using as an alternative. Uh, because I think all of our constituents, uh, who drive on our roads and, uh, who hate potholes just like we do, and all these problems, are gonna wanna know how we are going to pay for those roads to be continually repaved. Um, the reason that the Citizen Advisory Committee did not put repaving on there is because they were expecting that we'd find some alternative funding source. So I just don't want us to take the easy way out here in the short term, which is to say, we're not going to use TSPLOST to pay for repaving, and then just don't come up with a solution. That is, that is not, uh, an option in my mind. So I would like us to identify what funding source we're going to use, if not TSPLOST, before we vote on the final TSPLOST list.
Thanks for that, Commissioner Denson. I'll just add my two cents before we move on with the evening. Um, and your, your comments were exactly what I wanted to have everyone conscious of, that you know, we, we have paving needs as a community, commuters, ambulances, school buses, everyone relies on having smooth roads. Uh, we, we don't wanna end up becoming Akron, Ohio, or New Orleans, Louisiana. And that's gonna require some local commitment, and we've certainly, I think, anticipated all along that TSPLOST is gonna be a critical piece of that. And if it is a piece of it, I'll say we're, um, we're, we're really working in a much more broad-minded way than most cities do. Uh, some cities and counties spend the bulk of their TSPLOST on paving and very little on other kinds of things. So the fact that it's a piece of the puzzle, I think speaks well of community interest in a lot of things that advance the life and health of this community. You know, and, uh, regarding Commissioner Edwards' questions about federal funds, I, I am very interested in kind of being able to ascertain to the degree possible uh, how the infrastructure package may support some of the same goals that, uh, that we see in TSPLOST. So anyhow, thanks for all your comments. I think this is helpful. It's helpful for the public to hear what's on our minds. And, um, we're gonna have several more conversations before we, uh, we move to a vote. Um, but I appreciate everybody putting some ideas on the table for their colleagues to consider. All right, we're gonna move on to resident input on the consent agenda. Rules of input are the same as for other areas, and that is, uh, if those who are here to speak to consent agenda items would simply provide your name for the record and, uh, provide you three minutes of opportunity.
Yes, hi. Uh, my name is Susan Monteverdi. I'm a resident here in Athens, Georgia. I have a gra, uh, a page here that I wanted to share with the public. Um, I'm speaking on Agenda Three, and I specifically want the public to pay attention to the Facts and Issues Number 16 and Number 17, which includes this graph. It's with regard to fire vehicle program to, uh, maintain our fire department. And as you can see from this graph, the top line is the funding, pre-pandemic funding, and we have a deficit. The bottom left graph is the post or current pandemic funding, and we have an even larger problem because of cost of increases of inflation and the cost of equipment. It has nothing to do with new equipment. It's the same amount of equipment in both cases. And what you see here is a $3.25 million gap in funding relative to the top. $878,000 per year was considered to be needed for replacement of fire vehicles pre-pandemic. We have $320,000 per year in SPOLOST 2020 funding. We had zero funding in the FY 2020 budget. We had zero funding in the 2021 budget. We had zero, uh, $292,000 in the 2022 budget. The fire department has suggested that the two ways to get rid of this gap so that we can maintain our current level of fire safety in this town is to use ARP funding or to increase it in the, in the budget. I went to the retreat, and I listened to the commissioners who talked about this. One of their options was to have, go to UGA and have them pay for the ladder truck, because they have six-story apartment buildings downtown, and it's their problem, not ours. What they hit, what they forget to say is that we have this new six-story Piedmont Hospital downtown, which needs service and a ladder truck. So I guess UGA is gonna have to pay for our service at our hospital during a pandemic. Then, the next option were fire service fees. What are fire service fees? Well, fire service fees are just like a stormwater fee. A thing, same thing for increasing resident taxes. What they wanna do is charge you a fire service fee for, instead of funding, instead of funding what they need to fund by funds that were approved for this kind of purpose during a pandemic. Okay? What do they wanna use our ARP money for? A $150,000 garden, a $400,000 disparity study, a $267,000 ART program, a $400,000 in youth programs addition, $2.55 million in a red, in a homeless tent camp, $314,000 for a stainless steel Portland Blue homeless toilet downtown. Okay, that was under T plus, T SPOLOST 2018, so that doesn't count. Okay, my mistake. So I'm asking residents to talk to your commissioners, ask them how they're gonna come up with $3.25 million to keep the fire department running. They're.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else here to speak to the consent agenda? Those are items number one through nine. All right, with, uh, with no one else, uh, would any commissioner like to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, uh, if not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there's one ordinance before we do the vote.
Uh, if you could read that, please, Attorney Drake. I appreciate it.
It's a item, Agenda Item Number One, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to special events and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. There are a motion for approval of consent agenda?
Okay, second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Wright. I apologize, who's the second or?
Link.
Uh, motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any post? All right, hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. All right, we're gonna move on to public input regarding old and new citizens. So those are items 10 through 22, items 10 through 22. So now is that time, if anybody who's like to speak to 10 through 22, would approach the mic, and rules of input are the same. You'd provide your name and let us know the item you're speaking to, and then your three minutes will begin. Good evening.
Hey there, um, my name is Bryn Adamson, and I'm speaking to Item 15 and Town and Gown Players specifically. I did bring some stuff to put in the record, and since there have to be 13 copies in a box, who do I give this to since no one's here?
Uh, you can just give it to, uh, the public information staff.
Okay, all right. So, um, volunteer is defined by as a person who freely offers to take part in an enterprise or undertake a task freely given. Our volunteer executive board, president, vice president, secretary and treasurer are elected every October per our bylaws. Volunteer chairs of several standing committees also serve our front of house, development, season passes, facilities, second stage, membership and publicity. Any one of these positions, done well, is a part-time job, and that's. Any one of these positions done well is a part-time job, and that's even before we do a show. We produce six main stage shows a year that run for two weeks. The last one was The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, directed by Dr. Melanie Marty, and four second stage shows that run for one week. The last one was Athens Vignettes, a dialogue with the African-American community directed by Dr. Freda Scott Giles. This means our calendar is full. A show has a volunteer director, sometimes more than one assistant director, a producer, lighting designer, poster designer, costume designer, set designer, building floor person, stage manager, booth operators for both sound and lights, backstage hands. If it's a musical, there's a musical director and a choreographer, uh, and of course, the actors. All are volunteers. They give their time because they want to and because it's important to them. Why does anyone feel the need to give their extra time for no compensation? As a society, we encourage volunteering as a part of education, and giving back can take many forms, like public art. Public art is defined as an art in any media whose form, function, and meaning are created for the general public through a public process. Town and Gown Players is a very accessible, all-volunteer organizations that produces public art, however ephemeral, for the citizens of Athens Clark County. We provide this because of our volunteers. I don't know of any other Athens nonprofit that operates without one employee, but we do. There's no artistic director or executive director making a salary. All members can occupy any given role for any show or committee, or even the opportunity to represent our organization in front of our local government. Please pass item fifteen. We look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryn. Is anyone else here to speak to old or new business again, items ten through twenty-two?
Hi.
Evening.
Hi, my name is Alan Ravel. I'm um also speaking about the Town and Gown Players and the lease of the Athens Community Theater. I auditioned for my first show there in nineteen eighty-three. We are profoundly grateful to have a building and, more importantly, a theater in which we can gather and create theater arts for the community with people of the community. More than fifty years, Town and Gown Players has maintained and improved the theater building and property that was granted to us in nineteen sixty-eight. We have been good stewards of the building and grounds. The interior has been upgraded at least three times, including renovation of the entrance and bathrooms, providing handicap access under ADA guidelines. In addition to enhance theatrical equipment, Town and Gown has installed new house and lobby upgrades, as well as paid-for HVAC, electrical, and plumbing repairs. This little cement block building has survived and thrived under our care for fifty-four years. It's also worth mentioning that in two thousand nine, after three of our members were murdered at the theater, we raised money and created a memorial garden, which we call Arcadia Garden, to honor their memory. Along with help from ACC, we lovingly maintain Arcadia Garden, and not just for ourselves, as the garden is open to and used by neighbors, passersby as well. Our friends are there with us in that place. This building, what we have made of it, has been home to generations of people in Athens from all walks of life, from all social and economic stations, from all backgrounds or beliefs. Town and Gown Players has more than honored our part of the original agreement, and we have demonstrated that we care for, deeply care for, and take care of this facility. We show us is an honored place. Summary, my message is that we have been good stewards of this facility. And to underline how seriously we take that responsibility, I'll end with this observation. Over the decades, I've personally seen theater companies come and go in this town, started by talented and motivated actors who devoted their time and energy into putting up some wonderful productions, but without a theater to call their own, they all eventually found the financial burden too heavy to carry on. Because the Town and Gown Players have a home in that humble theater building on Grady Avenue, we are able to provide the Athens community with educational opportunities and the opportunity to participate directly in all phases of producing performance art for our community, and we've been able to sustain that contribution for over fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business?
Yes, hello, uh, good evening. My name is Amy Miller, and I'm a native Athenian and a current constituent of Commissioner Myers. I've been a member of the Town and Gown Players since nineteen eighty-eight and have served in numerous capacities, from actor to stage manager to president of the Board of Directors. I am now serving as development chair for the Players, which makes fundraising and donor stewardship my responsibility. And that's why I wanted to speak to you about the importance of donor intent. If you spend any time in fundraising, it's a term you're familiar with. There are rare donors who are happy to see you use their funds in whatever way you see fit, but the majority want to know exactly how their funds will be used and will hold you accountable for any variation, and they should. Donors gift organizations for specific reasons, and those intentions should be honored as a matter of ethical and legal procedure. In the case of the Athens Community Theater Building, those intentions could not be clearer. W.A. Mathis's original letter to the mayor and council states that Town and Gown has contributed a great deal to the entertainment and cultural atmosphere of Athens, and that for the institution to continue its contribution to the community, it must have a home. I would want the Town and Gowners, as long as they continue to operate as a theater group, he writes, to be given first priority on the use of the building. Mr. Mathis then outlines his intention to donate the funds necessary to make the building happen, an amount that today would equal roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. In his letter, Mr. Mathis mentions Mr. Bob Nichols, a member of the Players who had donated his services as an architect to create, and I quote, "a plan for a building which will meet there the Town and Gown's requirements." Mr. Nichols is now ninety-one, he's still with us. He will tell you without hesitation that charging Town and Gown rent for the use of this space goes against the intent of this donation. In my time with Town and Gown, I've overseen or been involved in numerous capital campaigns to improve our theater, many of which were mentioned by Alan. We've replaced our seating twice, purchased and installed a new main stage curtain, made our bathrooms and lobby ADA compliant, designed our memorial garden, and upgraded our light and sound system. All of these projects were made possible through generous, specific donations from our community of supporters. When that donor intent is violated, it undermines the trust on which all charitable giving relies. In a twenty-two thousand and five survey by zombie American adults, seventy-eight-point-seven percent of respondents said they definitely or probably would not give again to a charity that whose funds weren't used not for its intended purposes. We're an organization that relies solely on the support of our community. For volunteers, for ticket sales, and for the donations that allow us to maintain our building and keep providing live theater that is accessible to the largest possible group of participants and audience members, dismissing this intent of our most crucial donor and the legacy his gift created will jeopardize all of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business?
Yes, Narky Norton on East Side. Good evening. Today I feel a bit frustrated, but mostly excited. Frustration's from delays to figure out what our financial fate will be, but I do feel excited. These delays actually mean progress. These delays communicate that this commission takes this leasing agreement seriously. It shows that our government can work for its people. You are listening and you are pondering how to help during the pandemic and how to help be equitable and just once the pandemic era ends, which is why I'm hopeful. But let me take you back to nineteen sixty-eight. The funds were donated to build Town and Gown primarily for theater. Mr. Mathis did not intend for us to pay when he gifted this building to the city. His daughter and the architect to this day attest to the intent of why this building exists. Later on in nineteen ninety-six, the city's attorney addressed President Rick Rose about creating a lease to document the donation as a formality. That letter clearly states the tension and concerns that our membership had about entering a lease. Additionally, it specified the relationship between TNG and the city, which led to the one-dollar lease formality officiated in nineteen ninety-eight, and it explains why we have paid our maintenance, our upkeep, and utilities since nineteen sixty-eight. Thirty years after that building was donated, our members feared entering that lease would lead to unforeseen issues. And twenty-four years later, in twenty-twenty-two, these fears have manifested into a tug-of-war between the commission of the past and the commission of the present. I support the commission's move to balance the scales of their predecessors and attack systemic injustice. I am simply asking that Town and Gown's unique agreement does not become collateral damage in this tug-of-war. Last I spoke about how Town and Gown has and is changing the last time I was here in December. I am the first black president of our history, and I am leading the most diverse board in our history. This is why I have picked fierce personalities on my board to help shift our theater into a revolutionary age of public art that honors tradition and welcomes the rich nuances of social justice in theater. But I don't get a paycheck, neither does my board. In fact, to participate, you have to pay dues. When that first happened to me, I delayed my payment as long as I could because I was a broke student. Even later, as an entry-level professional, I um confessed that I clicked the word senior citizen, and I clicked the word student because I could not afford regular admissions to see the shows. So I want to forewarn you that asking us to push the tab on our community is counterintuitive to your efforts and to my diversity plan, which would welcome more Black and Brown people and more people from low socioeconomic statuses. Thank you for listening and showing that you hear us. Support nonprofits who bring good to our community and dismantle barriers for community leaders who look like me. You can do both. I will ask this not just now, but in six months. In closing, history still has its eyes on you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We don't get enough music at the podium. All right, uh, anyone else who would like to speak to old or new business? Come right on up.
Uh, yes, uh, it's Grant Whitworth. I am uh speaking to item ten on uh the the Spring Valley Road rezoning. I live at uh seven-sixty Meg Street. I just wanted to say quickly, I appreciate everybody's work on this. We do support the commission-defined option that has been attached here, and uh again, thank you all for all your hard work, and thanks everyone involved, and um I hope y'all will vote for this proposal and um help us continue to bring quality jobs to this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, anyone else like to speak to old or new business? Give folks a second, just to see if there's anybody else who's interested in approaching the mic in the chamber. Jeff, is that everybody?
Uh, yes, that appears to be everyone.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, we will go ahead and return to commission conversation uh regarding these items. Um, first order of old business is the thirteen-ten Spring Valley Road rezoning, and this is in District Nine, Commissioner Thornton's district, and uh she and Commissioner Link have a commission-defined option. So Commissioner Thornton, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
I'm, I'm, I actually am going to turn it over to Commissioner Link. I think at the last meeting on December the seventh, um, I believe it was Commissioner Myers that asked if we had talked to some of the residents. Well, we, we, we've done that, we've talked to the residents. Um, we even talked about some ideas that may not be um, um, this may not be the proper time. I think Commissioner Myers had some ideas about some other things we could do, and some of the residents actually spoke to it, and I, you know, I, I think they were glad to know that there were other things, like this wouldn't be the end-all, um, do-all. And, 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 and in my, our meeting yesterday, some of the concerns that the residents mentioned, in my opinion, could have been, should have been some of the things that we should have addressed using uh traffic calming techniques and, and studies, lighting, information. So there were a lot of things that I can understand now why the residents were um concerned, and there are things that we could have and should have and will um follow up on. So uh I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Link. She, she looks so stoic there. Um, thank you for smiling. Uh, but I'm gonna turn it over uh to Commissioner Link, so she'll give you the um the nitty-gritty and the facts. I just spoke from an emotional place. Thank you, Commissioner Link.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Link.
Yeah, um, I'll move that we adopt this um CDO. Um, and I just want to point out the couple of additional conditions we're adding to the property.
I'll second, if nobody else will. Second.
Okay. Um, we're got, we're um asking for a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer along the road frontage um directly across from the, the existing residential-owned neighborhood. Um, and um that does allow for a driveway and, and utilities access into the property. And we're also um clarifying the, the allowed use of warehouse or distribution facility, um, which is, is part of the allowed uses in that EI zone. Um, but anything over two-hundred-thousand square feet would be required to um find a secondary access onto a road other than Spring Valley Road, um, Athena Drive, Boils Drive Road, or Olympic Drive. That's totally, would be totally up to whatever developer does end up working on this property, and there would be negotiations among private property owners, but it would be a requirement if, if that use was to be employed. Um, I feel like this um honors the original zoning of the property and the intent for an employment center, but it also would maintain the rural character of, of that road. So um I'd, I'd ask that we um accept this CDO.
Thanks, Commissioner Link. All right, got a motion from Commissioner Link and a second from Commissioner Edwards. All right.
Mr. Mayor, there's an ordinance.
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just uh thank my colleagues, Commissioner Thornton and Link, for working on this and reaching a compromise that works for all parties involved here. Look forward to passing this and moving on. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Go ahead, Judd, read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-point-four-seven-six acres located at thirteen-ten Spring Valley Road from AR Agricultural Residential to E-one Employment Industrial with Condition and for other purposes.
All right, thanks, Attorney Drake. I appreciate that. I'm gonna move over to Commissioner Myers and then Davenport.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with the uh what I had brought up at the last meeting that Commissioner Thornton referred to as well. Um, and that I'm going to support this. Um, in the spirit of though making our zoning consistent with our future land use map as we're doing here, I'd like to reach out to Commissioner um Davenport to, to explore the idea of a commissioner-initiated rezoning of the triangular, um, I think it's about thirty-seven acres that's on the same side of Spring Valley as the Thomas Farms and is in a rural future land use plan and immediately adjacent to the Firefly. So I'll follow up with um Commissioner uh Davenport after this in the future.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Davenport.
Commissioner Myers, uh, Thornton, Link, and, and others who have worked really hard on the CDO, um, I am doing, I would like to do a substitute motion to deny. Um, my reason being is the fact that these residents are taxpayers as well, and they truly feel, and I truly feel with them, that this type of rezone, when they purchased the property and bought, bought their homes, is going to be disruptive to their livelihoods and their quality of life. Um, we, we gotta think ten years down the road, considering the fact that these people are retired, these people are starting families, we got a Firefly Trail coming in. People love that rural aesthetic, you know, seeing the stars at night. I feel out in District One, and especially with the Thomas Farm neighborhood. Um, and these, and the residents feel that their, their property values would be devalued, that their quality of life would be diminished with, you know, um, with the aesthetics of the building, the streetlights. You know, any other actual streetlights is pretty much going to illuminate the entire street and the natural traffic. It's not going to make that, you know, the Firefly Trail as, as walkable as it should be or that neighborhood um, or that area less traffic, it's going to actually make it worse. Um, you're gonna see more traffic, it's gonna make it more dangerous. Um, and it's just disrupting those individuals who bought those homes thinking that that property across the street was going to be built residential. Um, and to turn it to, uh, and even a, even a light industrial is just going to disrupt their quality of life, and I have to stand up for my constituents. Hopefully, some of them will second it.
So substitute motion on the floor from Commissioner Davenport. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's a second from Commissioner Hool. Commissioner Hool, any comments, a second or?
I've tossed and turned about this one for quite some time, and I feel like there's really compelling arguments on both sides. Uh, I do feel like it's important for us as a body to see through the discussion and honor Commissioner Davenport's request here to at least consider this. Um, I, I I, you know, I feel like this is a lesson ultimately in us as a body and the community as a whole, to be sure that we are looking years ahead to the decisions we make about some of these small-scale things. There's another item on our agenda later that I'll be asking us to do the same about. And, you know, we can talk about what the original intention of this tract was years ago, but this body and the community therefore shifted that intention by rezoning at AR. And I think it's important that we take seriously the ramifications of when those decisions are made. It's not just a convenient way to, you know, give somebody a tax break for a certain kind of area that they're using a certain kind of way at that time. It's having an effect long-term on what happens adjacent. And I guess ultimately where I'm at is feeling compelled by the resident input against this move. So, yeah, not the most articulate argument, but I've been moved by my colleague. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Mr. Parker?
Um, yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came into the meeting prepared to support the CDO put forward and thank Commissioners Link and Thornton for putting that together, but having heard Commissioner Thornton's lingering concerns about the amenability of residents to accept the conditions on the rezoning that they had endeavored to bring forward, as well as Commissioner Davenport's, you know, lingering concerns about his constituents' feelings on the project, as well as acknowledging that, I think generally with these requests, we are trying to balance like the concerns and interests of existing residents against the desires of folks that are generally, you know, seeking to, you know, profit off of development. And so it's a more general comment, just thinking about how we as a body can, and not only, you know, as Commissioner Hul said, think towards, you know, years, years out with regards to the way we want to be planning our community, but how we as a body can drive more resident-centered and resident-led development across the city. So with that being said, I'm prepared to support Commissioner Davenport's substitute motion.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input? All right, Jean, if you go ahead and call roll on the substitute motion, beginning with Commissioner Davenport.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
No.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
No.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Three yes, seven no.
All right. Thanks, Madam Clerk. All right, we return to the original motion on the floor. Attorney Drake has read the ordinance, and so we'll begin with, roll call with the original motioner of Commissioner Link.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Parker?
And the current CDO addresses most of those, but there's kind of one broader question of do we want a blanket policy? And what I mean by a blanket policy is as these pump stations are likely to keep coming before us in a way that they never have in the past, I feel that we need to be thoughtful and proactive about how this will affect residents 20 years down the road, as well as staff, and not leave people in a situation where there's a literal mess to clean up 10, 20, 30 years down the road if these are not maintained properly. And so discussing this with with staff a good bit, it sounds like something similar to the policy we have around backflow certifications, where there's an annual certification you do that public utilities keeps up with is perhaps a good way for us to go, so that these can remain the responsibility of private entities, but we have some kind of accountability measure to make sure that they are actually keeping up with it. And we don't run into the problems we've seen with stormwater and pools and roads and some of these HOAs where there isn't a well organized organization, I guess, to keep up with that maintenance in the decades after an original commission approval. So hopefully that makes enough sense. If this is all a bit confusing to everyone, I'm very happy to talk about it in more detail, and I'd like to give us sufficient time to do that. So I'm just asking for a hold till February. Also waiting for some feedback from the attorney's office to clarify whether we can put in place a policy that would apply retroactively to pump stations that already exist, because I think that's a real concern if we were to move forward on this without having that policy in place. And then this particular neighborhood would not, would be somehow exempt de facto from having to comply with that policy, then I would like to make sure that we've got that policy in place before we pass this. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. And if folks haven't had a chance to take their email today, there's material in your email. So I think this hole gives everybody an opportunity to absorb that and then ask staff any future questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, you know, I seconded the hole because I did glance at the email that Commissioner Hall sent out, but I would like to talk to you one on one about this to make sure I understand completely. So I am one of the commissioners that would like to talk with you one on one before this comes up for a vote.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'm thinking about this myself. Those future costs down the road are the thing that I am concerned about. And in reading some of the materials, it seemed to be like there would be a responsibility of these neighborhoods in the future, which requires some sort of organization and HOA. And I was just wondering how that affects more affordable development that is in search of pump stations and upkeep in the future. As a resident moving into a neighborhood in 25 or 30 years, I think my assumption would be that the sewage system would be taken care of. That's one of the county items. And so I'm really concerned about how that plays out. What we do now plays out in 25 or 30 years.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input? Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, happy to meet with you, Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Myers and anyone else. Just please reach out. I, to Commissioner Myers' point, you know, another thing we can look into is if we want to have a policy in place for notifying residents, or perhaps a requirement in place attached to this, similar to how we're solidifying. The developers indicated a commitment to solar, so just making sure that we've captured that in writing to make sure they follow through. But perhaps we can also codify a requirement for notification to the residents as they move in. So that's also probably something that would be complicated enough. I'd want to talk with staff and the attorney's office before I assume we can do that in some kind of easy way. But insofar as we're able, I think that would make a lot of sense. And the important thing here, I think, for everyone in this body to consider is that while this is just one neighborhood on the outskirts of my district, we're likely to see a lot more of these as developers are looking to build in places where the topography hasn't been so conducive in the past, but now there's nowhere else to build. So, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hamby?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just going to say something real quick. Just, just to point to, I'm drawing a blank on the street, that we used splash dollars for. Yeah, I mean, this seems like a similar situation. And just, I would, I would tread very carefully from that standpoint, because Commissioner Myers made some good points about the future cost and future expectations from that standpoint.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, there is a motion to hold till February. Any further input? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, any opposed? All right, we'll see you in a month. All right, we're moving on to item 15, the community benefits agreement submitted by agencies wishing to qualify for rent reduction for use of ACC government facilities. And there's a commission defined option that Commissioner Denson's brought forward, so I'm going to ask him to make a motion and begin commentary.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion for the commission defined option. If I get a second, I'll go and explain it.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Parker.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So due to the ongoing public health emergency because of the COVID-19 pandemic, of course, and to give ensure, give time to ensure that the fruits of this leasing policy represent the goals of the community and this commission, myself and Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Link are presenting a CDO that does the four following things. It accepts the community benefit agreements from all submitting tenants. It sets the annual leases for FY23 for, to be $1 for all tenants that hadn't accepted CBA. It requires that all tenants with an accepted CBA to have their leader, the leadership of their organization complete diversity, equity, and inclusion training within the FY23 fiscal year. And the last thing it does is requires ACC Gov. to meet with all the current nonprofit leases within six months to discuss creating an equitable rental agreement for FY24 within the unified leasing policy for ACC Gov. facilities.
All right, there's a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Parker, did you want to provide any input?
I'm sure. I'm very grateful to Commissioners Link, Denson, and Thornton for bringing this forward. I do think this captures the spirit of what many of us were desiring to see with regards to giving some of these nonprofits a, a chance to stabilize during the pandemic. And also, I really appreciate that they have created an opportunity for us to have discussion, ongoing discussion with these nonprofits in order to understand how we can craft mutually beneficial agreements moving forward. I did have one question, however, for the authors of the CDO with regards to the diversity, equity, and inclusion training that is mandated as part of this, a part of the CDO. So would that be under the, I'm so sorry, the diversity, equity, inclusion office at, of ACC Gov. or someone they would be able to contract with privately and then show us proof of, as well as I think Mr. Norton, who was the president of Town and Gown, you know, illuminated a lot of the equity and inclusion work that they are undertaking at, you know, a place like Town and Gown. And so any comments that anyone would like to give regarding how this is compatible or might be flexible, given some of the work that some of these orgs are already doing. So I certainly wouldn't want it to be redundant if they are already taking steps towards making that a more core part of their programming and mission.
Commissioner Denson, is legislative intent that currently underway DEI training would suffice?
That was a part that Commissioner Thornton was passionate about, so I'll let her please speak to that.
Actually, we added that. And first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Denson for working with me on one on one on this. It's interesting that Commissioner Parker brings that up because I just watched a documentary on DEI. And just saying you're going to have DEI, it sounds good, but it is not as effective just going through a training. I think the, the meetings that we're going to have in those six months with the nonprofits, we really need to see, they may already have a well rounded diversity, equity, inclusion program or recruitment already in place. I think, though, the intent for me was if this is our intention of this commission to include not just the commission being focused on DEI, but anybody that is associated with us to know that is important to this commission. This is, this is the message we're sending. So I think in those meetings and, 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 I'm so, I've learned a lot from the Town and Gown presentation. This is not the Town and Gown I remember. And I think for me, having those conversations on the, on the onset before a final policy is initiated would be, would be helpful. So we don't know where people are on the scale of DEI, but I think those, those intimate conversations would be helpful. Personally, personally, I don't think anybody that renders services to the whole community should be paying rent. I don't, that's just me personally. But there, I have asked the county manager to give us a breakdown of what those dollars are, you know, what will be coming in. So it's, I think those meetings, Commissioner Parker, is probably going to be beneficial for us as we develop a policy in the long run. But this would give us the time to do it.
So it hasn't yet been defined, like if they have to go through a certain specific act?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Is, just, just to make sure, Attorney Drake, is that like, like, is what Commissioner Thornton describing, like accurately enough, captured in the language of the CDO?
I notice, I mean, the CDO language, it requests that the leadership of the organization take part in diversity, equity, inclusion training. I don't, I mean, obviously, if the commission wants to be more specific about a particular type of program, it could. But I mean, it sets forth the requirement, you might want to add and provides, I think it's generally okay. I mean, it could be more specific, but only you might add and provide documentation of said training to the commission or to the, yeah, to the government.
Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off, Attorney Drake. Did you have more you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. I certainly wouldn't hold this up. I do think like the spirit of that particular item within the CDO, like I certainly agree with. I just want to make sure that we're able to hold people to that by having sufficient specificity. But I think Commissioner Thornton brings up a good point of conversations are ongoing with these organizations over the next, you know, six months to a year. Through those conversations, it can become clear both what work they're currently already doing, as well as what gaps need to be filled. But the last question I had is whether, I guess, I guess there were only, I think, four organizations that submitted CBA. So this, so the, so the DEI training requirement is only for, for tenants that submitted a CBA?
Yes, I believe there's five total, I want to say. And yeah, it would be basically, yeah, for anybody who's getting a community benefits agreement and therefore the $1 lease during the pandemic, during the health, health emergency. And that, and it specifically says that so that it's not applying to any of the other partners that we technically have leases with that aren't under this community benefits agreement lease policy part.
Okay. I guess the final thing I'll say, and sorry for taking up so much time, is I would definitely be interested in seeing through, you know, when we look to renew leases or, you know, have a more unified policy after the pandemic, perhaps incorporating that into all of our leases, since I think that even if you aren't requesting a CBA, to ensure that you're providing services in a, you know, culturally responsive and understanding manner to all of the folks that you serve. It's something we would want to see from any organization working with us. But that's all, all the questions I had, just wanted some clarification and also to thank the authors of the CDO. Did, uh, did, uh, sorry, I thought I saw Blaine's hand go up.
I did. I just want to understand. So the DEI training, is that something that we would have these folks seek externally and then provide proof that they had gone through that? Is that, is that what you were thinking, Commissioners?
I, I was thinking that after a meeting with a group, not individually, to just see where people are. And then we can kind of coordinate what people, first of all, what people want. Somebody may say, I don't want to go through a DEI training. And that might just shut that down right then. But we do need to educate people how important DEI is if we are trying to build a cultural, a culture of equity. And at the same time, folk may already be doing things, which I did not know how much Town and Gown was doing. So I think after that first meeting, County Manager Blaine, we need to assess where people are. And then we could be more, have a more concrete plan to move forward. I have talked to Attorney Drake about some of the things that they've done in, in making. We need to give people examples of, of, of things that they may or may not be exposed to. So that was the intent, um, commission, I mean, County Manager Williams, we don't have, we don't have, this is from scratch. And I think that first meeting or the second meeting is how we start creating something and making sure we have community input from the people who are doing the works and the boots on the ground.
Commissioners, what I might recommend, you know, given that this is an inaugural effort in this area and may be refined, as Commissioner Parker mentioned a couple of minutes ago, to include other leaseholders. And certainly, we are going to see leases every year that we serve on this body. You know, what we might want to do for staff benefit and for clarity, you know, is to indicate that outside training and evidence of that is accepted. I think what would be important for Andrew Williams and ACC staff is to understand it is not our responsibility to be the training provider.
That's, yeah.
There are lots of entities out there that, that provide DEI training. So is everybody comfortable with that being legislative intent that an outside provider for this year is acceptable?
I was going to suggest that we just clarify the language to state that, we have an office of diversity and inclusion in our own government, but maybe that staff should be the ones to determine whether or not whatever training an entity chooses to go through satisfies this requirement. Maybe adding the clause saying, require all tenants with accepted CBAs to have their leadership complete DEI training within the FY23 year as approved by ACC Diversity and Inclusion Office. And we can leave it up to our, our staff who is qualified in these matters, who has a lot of experience in these matters, to determine what the appropriate level of training is.
So is that a motion to amend?
I, I'll call it a motion to amend.
A second.
Can, can you restate it and make it clear for everybody? And then we get a second.
At the end of the condition three on the CDO, add the clause, as approved by ACC Gov.'s Diversity and Inclusion Office.
Office of.
Yeah, second.
Office of Diversity and Inclusion, however we formally state that.
And, and, thank you. I think we've got a motion to amend and second. I do want to check in momentarily here with Andrew Williams. Andrew Williams, do you anticipate sufficient capacity in the office to have staff review training that someone would undertake?
Yes, you know, what you're going to, I think, have unless we require a certain training, that there will be a cost associated with it for the folks, you know, I would imagine. Unless we mandate it, then it'll just be staff's call. And it may not be the same training for each individual entity. So I just have to talk to staff about that. And I'm not trying to make it difficult. We just want to make sure that we honor your intent and the level of DEI training that, that you're wanting. When you say leadership, we're going to assume that means the entire board of these nonprofits as well.
Thanks, Andrew Williams.
And adding that clause is to leave the specifics of this requirement up to the office that we created to handle these kinds of issues. I personally don't know what, what kind of DEI providers are out there, but I'm, I'm sure that our own staff in that office does. And so they could help offer these entities some guidance in achieving that training.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Link. I've got a handful of Commissioners to get.
I seconded it, Mr. Mayor. I would just say, I support Commissioner Link. I think this is just a, a common sense compromise just to kind of move this thing through, you know, this little accountability check that people will just have to report that they've attended DEI training. And that's it. That sounds good to me. I thank the drafters of the CDO and look forward to moving this right along. Thanks.
All right, I've got, go right ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor. I just had one point before you voted.
No, no, I was just going to indicate that I have Commissioners Myers and Wright who indicated interest in commenting. Go right ahead, Andrew Williams.
Well, I was just going to talk about number four. So from a staff perspective, we do have a unified leasing policy that was constructed and approved by the commission that we thought created an equitable rental structure, where there is a little bit of variety with the community benefits agreements, which you see before you tonight. And it seems that we can certainly meet with the leases and get some feedback and share that with the commission, Mayor. But you might, I mean, if there, if, if the commission is not satisfied with the policy as written, then maybe it needs to be revisited in committee this year so that we do get at the real concerns that you still have.
I certainly read that element, Commissioners and Manager Williams, as effectively reiteration of the standing policy, you know, simply to provide clarity. Obviously, what we're talking about here, and this is probably helpful for the view of public too, is that we're talking about creating a policy that's going to be able to carry us through June 30th of 2023. So we're providing essentially a year and a half runway for any entity that would begin paying the fee based on the, the standing policy. So let me get to Commissioner Wright and Myers, and then I'll circle back to others.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait a minute, wrong button. I'm trying to, I'll have to get my hand down later. What I would, I appreciate all this discussion. I'm not going to try to piggyback on anybody's good, good points. But a detail that I would like staff to be taking track of is in the dialogue with our leases in this example, the, what's going to happen in the next six months, I would like staff to be documenting the time and then us learning how much staff manpower and money is being spent for this small, what seems to me to be a small amount of lease money coming in. And so that we can weigh out, as we continue to talk about this, if, if lease, if, if it's, if it's more trouble for the groups to report things, not just, not the training so much as what they're reporting to validate their community agreement, community enhanced, what's, what's the term for the community agreement?
Community benefits agreement.
Yeah. So the community benefits agreement. I, I think that the one on one and understanding how to fill that paperwork out can enhance the reporting on themselves. But it's a lot of time and effort being done to whittle down rent. So I think that as we continue to talk, I'd like for us to look at how much staff, of our staff time is being devoted to this. And it's also going to reflect how much these entities are doing, just to whittle the rent down from what it starts out with, with that elaborate algorithm that came out of committee. So I, I, I want to support us having more, another review in this next year of it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Mr. Myers?
Yes, I'm, I'm back to commenting on our substitute motion and the, the required DEI training. I was listening closely to Commissioner Parker's original comments on this, and they were echoing some of my questions. I'm very appreciative of the CDO. Clearly, we have a lot of people in the community who want to, want to see the CDO in place. So I appreciate all of you for working on it. But in terms of, of the redundancy that Commissioner Parker alluded to, and then also to what Commissioner Thornton was referring to in terms of discussions, finding out what people are already doing and so forth, I, I have qualms about this required DEI training, especially because there's a cost associated. And we're just talking about, we're talking about lowering the rents to help the nonprofits. And now it would very easily cost 200 a person, $500 for this DEI training. And I actually, well, this was all going on, I had some other wording that I thought captured the spirit of what Commissioner Thornton had, require all tenants with an accepted CBA to assess their commitment to DEI with the ACC Office of Inclusion and participate in DEI training as needed. Because I just, I just don't want to put this other burden, cost, financial burden on organizations that might already have developed something in the direction that they're going in. So that's my concern with the, the motion that's now on the floor.
Thanks, Commissioner. Circle back to Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And no, I, I appreciate this discussion to the remarks made by Commissioner Myers. But I, I, I really don't want to put more labor on our staff, especially Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office right now, that is, that is short staffed, to, to have to evaluate organizations' programs to see if they fit. To me, that seems like very, very laborious. And I, I'll say, I, I think, I think we, it is worthwhile and valuable, I think, fair for us to, if, if an entity is going to be able to use a county facility for $1 for an entire year, I, I think it's not too much to ask that, that DEI training be required. And if they can show that they've already done this, well, then they've already fulfilled that obligation. But if, if they haven't, I understand that, I think every organization that's on this list that puts a CBA forward probably thinks, and rightfully so, that they're already doing some of this work, just like I think every commissioner probably also thinks that they've already been doing some of this work. But all of us also benefited from taking DEI training through Office of Inclusion, just like I think an organization would. And I think it ensures a high quality level of, of, of understanding around diversity, equity, and inclusion that I think we should expect from any nonprofit that's benefiting from this, from this policy, especially from a, a $1 policy. So, and, and I trust staff to be able to, kind of like Commissioner Edwards said, to be able to navigate this in a simple manner, just to ensure that every organization can check off the part of the CDO.
Anyone else before I circle back to Commissioner Thornton? Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Just three quick thoughts. And I am, I'm looking forward to supporting the amendment and the, the commission defined option that's on the table. One, one minor note first is just for my colleague. I know the Inclusion Office gave us some of those really awesome materials they put together shortly before Crystal's departure. And they've switched to calling it IDE instead of DEI. I know DEI has been a common way of phrasing this, but if we want to try to be consistent with their language, it's a minor, minor shift for us to encourage. I did want to clarify that this policy itself is not reparations, but I do really appreciate that it's informed by a reparational approach that I know many of my colleagues are interested in taking in policymaking moving forward. And so I do hope that this can also inform some of the discussions that I hope we'll be having in the coming year about what we as a body can do to take a reparational approach to policymaking and budgeting in the, the months and years ahead. And the last thing I wanted to share is there's just been a lot of concern, many people I've spoken with and that we've gotten emails from about the idea of rent at all for some of these organizations that haven't been paying rent. And, and I, I hear that. It's, it's a very valid concern. I've spent a lot of time working in nonprofits that struggle to, to, you know, where every, every penny counts. And I guess I wanted to share the rationale for this is that the rent that's being charged is to cover just a portion of the costs of maintaining these facilities. So, so why I do ultimately believe that this policy does make sense is that it's just asking the organizations who are benefiting from use of county facilities and the maintenance of those facilities by county employees to help pay for a part of that cost. Any organization that qualifies through a CBA for the discounted rent is actually still going to be getting more bang for their buck than they would pretty much anywhere else. And, and so for that reason, I think that's an important point for us to be clear on about like why this is happening at all, is to help us maintain publicly owned facilities. is to help us maintain publicly-owned facilities with not just public money, but also some money from these organizations that are using them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hul. I appreciate you making that point. I've explained to a couple of folks that there's no profit motive or unified government in these rents. And if anything, it really just is covering some bare minimums of basic building envelope kinds of maintenance. But thank you for that. Commissioner Thornton?
I never meant for this to be about a dollar amount as far as rent was concerned. So I appreciate Commissioner Hul's comments. I just wanted that those who have been using our facilities understand both sides of the story. That was the main intent. And I thought that having a meeting within the, in the six months of this year would help us be ready at the end of the year for whatever the policy looks like. So if our goal is to promote equity and fairness, we got to educate people. People may think they're equitable. People may think they're fair. So it was never meant to put a dollar amount on what people pay. It was to open up the communication on the vision that this commission has, that we want to increase the table, invite more people around the table. And when we come up with policies and we don't explain that to people, they take it in a different way than what we have meant. So I just wanted us, at the end of, if we, if we did this just with, oh, this year because of COVID, you only have to pay a dollar, 2023 is going to be here before you know it, and we're going to be in the same position. So why don't we get their input ahead of time? So when 2023 comes around, everybody will feel that they have had some buy-in or an opportunity for buy-in. So I didn't know this was going to get this detail about who and what and all of that. I was just trying to create space that those affected right now have input and also have an understanding of why. So I'm sorry this took a life of its own, but it lets me know that it's even more now important, if we're having this discussion with the 10 of us or 11 of us, including the mayor, how important it is for those folk who are actually utilizing our facilities to have this conversation or this opportunity. That was my intent.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. I think everybody's provided some input. I think I've got a motion and a second on the floor. May I ask, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Are we voting on the motion to amend? What are we voting on?
We're voting on the amended motion.
We, I think, Mayor, we have to vote on the motion to amend, and then after that, we can vote on the amended motion.
We'll take, we'll take that order of events.
Say that again now. Which one are we voting on?
We're voting on Commissioner Link's, we're voting on Commissioner Link's motion to add the small phrase that the organizations will report to our Diversity Inclusion Office when they take the IDE training. That was seconded by me. We'll vote on this amendment, and then we'll vote on the main motion.
All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
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 Any votes to the amendment? All right. Now, all in favor of the full motion as amended? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. We at least have great enough, clear understanding with everybody through again June 30th of 2023. All right, moving on to item 16, which is the Construction Material Testing and Special Inspection Services for the Classic Center Arena. We've just got the bids in from this between our agenda-setting meeting and now. Entertain a motion for approval of this item?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hamby, any comments on this item?
Ready to go.
Yep.
Everything looks to be in order, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I do, I do want to make one point, and that is just to, to actually make sure that everyone in the public knows that this is actually the second thing we're approving for the Classic Center Arena tonight, and that we had on our consent agenda, we approved the, the new construction, what is it called? Guaranteed maximum price, and that that can be looked at. That number has risen considerably and is now up to $135 million with the parking deck and other facilities involved. So anyone out there who wants to learn more about that can open up that agenda report and learn more about what's going on with the arena.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Similarly, item 17 is a bid award that we have excuse me, entertain a motion for approval of this broadband connectivity enhancement contract.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Hamby, any commentary?
No.
Edwards?
Look forward to hearing what we get back from the contractor here on the development of broadband throughout the county. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Further input on this item?
I had some, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead, Commissioner Parker.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in reviewing the agenda item particularly, facts and issues. Number one, it identifies three phrases for construction. First, you know, enhancing mission-critical ACC gov assets. Secondly, you know, municipal wireless infrastructure within the downtown area. And then expanding internet service opportunities to the rural community of Athens. And so I was wondering if we are beholden to that phasing that is laid out in the SPOS project description, given that I personally feel like it is more important. I definitely understand the need for us to enhance some of our mission-critical assets. But I would like to also prioritize making sure folks in rural areas of Athens get internet access, more so than it is urgent to me that we have municipal wireless infrastructure in the downtown area. And so are we, are we, I guess my question effectively is, are we beholden to that phasing?
So, Manager Williams?
Why, like?
Regional SPOS submission kind of sequence, but might we modify that as we move forward?
Well, my, my understanding is, so I think the user group, based on the project description, so Commissioner Parker, looking back at the project description, which I mentioned is sort of our, our touchstone for understanding what SPOS projects or T-SPOS projects should fund, is including but not limited to. So it mentions all three of those. And thematically, the user group pulled that out and said, okay, these are the three things that we want to look at. And I think ideally, you would have something that, that served all three, if possible. And I think that's exactly the work that the consultant is going to dig into. So what will you, will come to you may be some recommended priorities, but it certainly won't prevent you from directing which, you know, which way we go. And certainly, your comments will be taken into consideration as they begin their work.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Manager Williams. And yeah, ready to move on?
Right. Any additional input?
I, you know, I want to follow up on Commissioner Parker's comment. And definitely, it was something that I overlooked, but it kind of goes back to the bucket theory. If we don't have some say-so, certain communities are going to be left out again. So I just want to put that out, that if people who live in the rural areas are not as well-connected automatically because they don't have the technology, they don't have the contacts, they live far apart. I just want to put that out. That is one of the big concerns I have with the bucket idea. So I'm okay with this, but I do think that we need to acknowledge and be intentional of people who are just left out, not because it's planned that way, not because nobody's evil. They're just left out. So we have to be intentional in some of these decisions that we're making. That's my only comment.
Thanks, Commissioner. I do want to note that the, the project statement that was in front of voters, that really is the legal foundation for SPOS projects. So, you know, oftentimes, there's preliminary work that goes into an initial presentation as the residents who we appoint are kind of hearing those. But, but this ballot language item, which I think is in Facts and Issues number two, which doesn't mention that that specific sequence, I think is the thing that we would want to look at. So just encourage commissioners and members of the public to take a look at that. I'm going to get Commissioner Myers and then circle back to Commissioner Parker.
Yeah, I noted the same thing that Commissioner Parker did and that Commissioner Thornton mentioned. And in the Facts and Issues number seven, it, it talks about a user group putting together a new analysis statement that doesn't have tier one, tier two, and tier three. The other thing to note is that that initial tiering that was probably in the project and not in the legal language was all put together before COVID, before we really saw the impact of broadband and not having access to it on people's, being able to go to school and work and everything else. So this is, you know, a prime place where, where time and history has, the facts of everyday life have changed probably what we need to do here in terms of priorities.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. I just wanted to bear, like, confirm with Manager Williams that expressions among this body this evening about an interest in prioritizing rural, development of rural infrastructure or for underserved areas could be a priority among the, the plans or recommendations that come forward, and that no other formal action needs to be taken to sort of solidify that, that interest among us, if that is indeed the interest of the commission.
Well, I, I would say, and if you look at Facts and Issues number seven, it includes a language that absolutely bolsters what you're saying. I don't think any of us, and staff certainly doesn't pretend to have that expertise. What we need to do is explore some different alternative solutions. I mean, the initial thought was that this would be a, a series of towers around, you know, the county that would serve, you know, you'd have to build out a platform that would ultimately serve the people in, in the rural parts of the county. So it could be a phased approach. But everything that you said will be recorded and shared with, with the consultants as they begin their work. But I would look to number seven and say, they're going to be looking at those areas of impact as they bring forward solutions. And one of the three is the residents of ACC and connecting those folks in the, who currently don't have that access.
Okay, thank you. And I know this is sort of just a reiteration of some of what you said before. I just wanted to confirm so that whatever recommendations we do ultimately get are best in line with some of those commission interests.
So just to be clear, you know, what will happen is mid-year this year, we'll hire the consultant, we'll bring him on, they'll work with the user group, and then there'll be some concepts brought forth to y'all for your comment and, you know, potential change. But it will begin to signal the direction this is going in, and just like all of our SPOS delivery, our SPOS project delivery, you have the ability to change the trajectory at that point.
For sure. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for that clarification. All right, everybody ready? I believe there's a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, I've got a request for a brief break. I've got 8:04 on my clock. We'll go ahead and just be back here at 8:10. I will see you then. See you in just a few. All right, everybody, welcome back to the monthly voting meeting of the Athens-Clark County Mayor and Commission. It remains January 4, 2022, and we've got just a handful of items left this evening. And we're picking up with item 18, which is a judiciary request for American Rescue Plan Act funds the State of Georgia Administrative Office of the Court. Very briefly, members of the public, the governor allocated about $110 million statewide for judicial circuits to tap into funds to handle some of their backlog in cases. And so our local judiciary has come up with a handful of positions to include four full-time positions in the district attorney's office, a full-time staff attorney for juvenile court, a full-time staff attorney for probate court, and then four full-time clerk positions in the clerk of courts office. And then separately, there is an allocation that we are controlling that goes through the public defenders offices based on a statewide allocation plan. So I'd certainly entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to hold, if I may.
Yes, Mayor, we're looking for a special-called session on Tuesday, and we were going to have the courts present. They may have some altered requests as a result of the meeting on December 21, so.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. All right, so can I have a motion to hold this item?
Yeah, motion to hold until the special-called session on Tuesday, January 11.
All right, motion to hold from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so we will see this very shortly. All right, 19 has been removed. Item 20 is an intergovernmental agreement with the Joint Development Authority of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County and the City of Winterville related to the new community food bank facility. And I'll make a brief note that the JDA approved this partnership at their meeting on Monday night. So entertain a motion. Starting this item?
Move to approve.
Second?
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, a second from Commissioner Parker. Any input, Commissioner Hul or Commissioner Parker?
Nothing that I think needs to be added on to what we've already discussed previously.
Right. Any further input from members of the body? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing none opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item 21. This is text amendments regarding subdivision and tree management standards held over from a month and a half ago, given that we didn't have sufficient strength of the body to come to conclusion with this item. So entertain a motion regarding this.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there are actually, there are three text amendments associated with this item. So three ordinances that relate to this agenda item, which pertains to text amendments related to mask grading.
So we need a motion for each of those, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the first.
I can read the first one. The first one is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to community tree management and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. There are a motion regarding this first component.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Denson. Any comment, Commissioner Edwards, its motioner?
I plan to support all three of these. The unanimous support of the planning commission, the support of our staff. This moves us in the right direction to increase the housing stock in our county. I think this is a good step. It provides the protection we need moving forward while balancing the interests of home builders. So ready to move this on through and go on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Denson?
Yes, I'm supporting this as it's, as staff has pointed out, it's important for us to make sure that when possible, forest regeneration is happening and more of the community space and development, rather than simply counting the trees that are planted in, say, every individual backyard, which should also be happening, but shouldn't be counting towards the forest regeneration. So I will be supporting this amendment.
Other input from members of the body, Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify. So we are taking these three separately. We're taking three separate votes here, which was different from how we were approaching it before. Okay.
That's right. Bond recommendation, Attorney Drake. Any other members of the body? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Please, Clerks Sprattlin, note that for the record. All right, next component is the site and design use standard. If you could read that ordinance, Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to site, design, use standards, and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. Could I hear a motion regarding this component?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Link. Any further?
That was me.
Oh, I apologize. Second from Commissioner Edwards.
Yeah, shaved. So a little confusion there. So part two of approving these steps that got unanimous approval from the planning commission. Look forward to moving this through. Thanks.
Thanks. Further input?
I'll just add, you know, I'm supporting all three of these. I had a good meeting with Planning Director Brad Griffin, and he explained some of the details. My, you know, I did have concerns about the possibility of using something like this as a tool to encourage more affordable housing. It should naturally encourage more affordable housing by cutting the cost of development. We hope that the developers would pass that on to homeowners. You know, I also had concerns about the tree buffer and how to ensure that that is maintained after construction. I feel like those are, those are issues that can be addressed in other parts of our code, you know, our tree ordinance in general. I feel could use some improvement in another section of the code. And the affordable housing aspect, you know, hopefully we'll be seeing this inclusionary zoning policy coming forward soon enough where we can exercise that here and there in new developments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to be super clear, because I know Attorney Drake read it aloud. I was trying to make sure I was on the right one. So we're talking about the second page of the agenda report.
Second one, that's right.
So this is where we get into the mask grading, right?
Yes.
So I plan to vote no on this item, as I did last month, for largely the same rationale. I am convinced that this is a good policy we should put in place eventually, but I'm unconvinced that it's a good idea to put it in place when we haven't put in place inclusionary zoning policies for single-family zones. I have heard some of the arguments made by members of this body and a couple of folks I've spoken with outside of these meetings about kind of like this trickle-down idea, you know, that we need more housing stock generally and that that will help. And while I think that there is definitely some truth to that, I also think the reality is that we're going to see a lot of lots redeveloped before we have inclusionary zoning policies in place as soon as this is put in place. And I don't think there's any reason for us to assume that those will include any affordable housing. And so I'd rather see us wait a little bit longer and get all these policies on the books at once to improve our chances of having an affordable component to some of the large-scale development that we're likely to see results from this. And so it's with that in mind that I plan to remain a no vote on this, not because I'm against the policy, but because I'm against the timing of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll speak in reference to this and the next item. I was one of the original folks to raise concern about the implications with this policy regarding affordable housing. And I have since then, particularly as a member of the Inclusionary Zoning Committee, working group, come around to supporting these measures at this time, chiefly because though it would be ideal to put this, to, you know, put these policy changes into motion in tandem with an inclusionary zoning program for single-family zoned areas. There isn't a guarantee that the folks that would be interested in developing the relevant parcels would opt into what are currently involuntary programs for inclusionary zoning. And so I would hate to see us put this on hold for another, let's say, year and a half, and ultimately get the same results as we would now. The only difference is that we, you know, delayed a year and a half of addressing our housing shortage here in Athens. And we have spoken previously as a body on the fact that increasing the housing supply relieves pressure on the housing market, therefore forcing fewer would-be homeowners of means for moving into gentrifying working-class neighborhoods because they can't find suitable housing elsewhere that matches whatever budget they may have. And so I do think there are advantages to reducing those housing market pressures now. I don't think there is a guarantee that if we wait on this, we will get more affordable housing than we would ordinarily. As Commissioner Link pointed out, there may be some ways in which the reduced burden on developers that comes with this policy change may in itself help foster more affordable housing. So I'm happy to support this, these ordinance changes at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'd like to just quickly address my initial concerns. When you hear mask grading, you think of environmental degradation. But through discussions with the stormwater management people who are really dedicated to taking care of our environment, I am convinced actually that this will be better than what we have in place right now, where we can only grade one plot for housing plot at a time. And therefore, my concerns in terms of the environment were, we're taking care of in those discussions we've had at earlier meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further input? All right, Clerks Sprattlin, if you could call roll, beginning with, was Commissioner Edwards the primary? Yes, begin with Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Thornton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamby?
No.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Denson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hul?
No.
Motion carries eight to two. All right, we're going to move to the final component. This is the subdivision regulations. And Attorney Drake, if you could read that ordinance for us.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to subdivision regulations and for other purposes.
Do I hear a motion regarding this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Denson. All right, any input?
Thanks, staff, for working on this package and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Denson, any follow-up?
Yeah, just saying that I think our constituency expects us to do whatever we can to increase the amount of housing stock. I'm sure we've heard from every, every one of our districts, we've heard from people desperately trying to find a house to move into or a house to rent. And I think that we need to do whatever we can to alleviate that pressure, which is therefore also increasing property values as when people buy a house, they're getting instead thousands of thousands of dollars above the asking price because of the limited supply, which has been also affecting property assessments, creating everybody's property assessments to go up. So I think we need to do as a kind of government to take responsibility of the part that we have responsibility over and the policies that we've done that are actually hurting the development of housing. And I think this does so. So I'm happy to support it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm planning to dissent on this one as well for similar rationale to the previous vote we took. Just to respond to some of the remarks from colleagues, I think it's important for us to not conflate development generally with development that benefits working-class people. And I'm worried that that's happening here, and I'm questioning the wisdom of moving this forward quickly ahead of other things that, in my view, need to happen in conjunction for this to really benefit the people of Athens the way we're talking about. But, you know, I hope I'm wrong. I'm not going to pretend like I've been wrong before, and maybe I'm wrong now. So I'm not going to die on this hill, hopefully. The other thing I just wanted to share for people who have been following this or look to follow in the future, it's been kind of this odd thing where the name of this agenda item has changed a couple times. It was first text amendments for tree management standards and now text amendments for mask grading. So as you go through past agendas, if you're feeling like nerding out about this down the road, you'll just note that the same items have been considered under different agenda titles at different moments. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Nobody will die on this hill, but they also don't die nerding out on the web.
Can't die on a hill once you flatten it out, so.
Die on the flatlands. Any further input on this item? All right, do a round robin, beginning with Commissioner Edwards.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Eight yes, two no.
All right, thank you, Clerk Sprattlin. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item 22, which is the 25th ordinance declaring local emergency related to COVID-19. And Manager Williams, could you provide the community a brief update regarding the change in testing site that's embedded in this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And as many folks may have seen or been a part of,
And Manager Williams, could you provide the community a brief update regarding the change in testing site that's embedded in this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And as many folks may have seen or been a part of, we, the testing site that we partnered, that you partnered with the Department of Public Health for a private provider, Mako, to provide testing services for the community at the old fire station number two at the corner of Mitchell Bridge Road and Atlanta Highway, got overwhelmed fairly quickly with this latest surge of Omicron. And so much so that it was creating traffic issues and neighboring properties were feeling the brunt of that. In response to that, the Department of Public Health and Mako and our staff identified Holland Park as an alternative site. And over the weekend, made, I gave some direction to go ahead and prepare the site, to move forward with that under this emergency powers to accommodate this traffic. The first day of operation was yesterday. As many of you may have seen or witnessed, we did have traffic snarls in and around Vincent Drive and Newton Bridge Road. And staff and Department of Public Health made some adjustments, and we feel like today was a much smoother day. And so working with the Department of Health and Mako, the testing company, for folks to call and, you know, designated time for them to go out there, they can go to Holland Park and get tested. If you have insurance, they will charge insurance. If you don't have insurance, then they will, you know, they will not charge you for the testing. So that's what's happening, and it's all at Holland Park. They have closed the testing site at Fire Station Number Two. The plan is to get through the surge through Holland and then relocate the testing back out to Fire Station Number Two and free up Holland Park for its normal springtime activity. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Manager Williams. Any questions from Commissioners or say one ready to make a motion? Commissioner Thornton?
I have a question before we make this vote. The two locations that you're talking about are both on the west side of town. And I am wondering, since innovative healthcare is doing testing and vaccines, was there any consideration of doing something on the east side of town, maybe even at Satterfield Park? Have we reached out to innovative or any other testing and vaccine agency on the east side of town? Or even the north side of Athens? That was for you, Manager Williams. I'm sorry.
The Department of Public Health had approached us about, you know, the testing partnership, which has been going on in a vacant building that we had for that purpose. And then it got overwhelmed and we just went with where we had the most capacity for storing traffic. So it, to answer your question, Commissioner Thornton, we've not done a canvassing of other providers. This has just been through the Department of Public Health.
Is, well, is that possible? I mean, this is monumental, and I think anybody that has the resources and are qualified to do the testing, we would definitely have all hands on deck. I'm not suggesting that I'm not going to vote against this. I would like, though, in the future, that we kind of look at the areas that seem to be overlooked.
Well, if, so we don't, we're not putting any financial resources into this. I mean, any provider that wants to provide testing to the public is certainly welcome to do so. And if a private provider, I guess, is willing to honor not charging folks if they don't have insurance and they need some extra space to do that, we would certainly entertain a partnership.
I would, I would, I would like at least that we reach out, because this was the first, I mean, this is the most detailed information that I got tonight. So I would hope that as we're trying to tackle this virus, that we would reach out to, to those agencies and see if they're interested in providing those services. That was my only point.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, though. Thank you.
Got a handful of others. Start with Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff and Blaine for their quick actions and, you know, helping our community to get vaccinated and get tested. But yeah, I just want to piggyback off a little bit of Commissioner Thornton in that, you know, maybe looking at the partner with DPH to look at our tennis center, tennis center on at Southeast Clark Park. It's a long driveway, people can drive up, drive in and get tested and head on out. All right.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion for us to accept the amendment to this.
Sure. Second?
Mr. Mayor, have we suspended the rules? And I will have the 22 as opposed to 24.
Oh, I appreciate that.
I was going to point that out as well.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. We do need a motion to suspend the rules. So can I first just quickly receive a motion to suspend the rules?
Sounds good.
Got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Yes. Yes.
All right, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And
So 22, Mr., is the ordinance to approve the 25th declaration of local state emergency. And then I, you know, I've been speaking of is 24 related to
Thank you. It's a second item. I apologize, everyone. The, I had believed inadvertently that the movement of the facility for testing was embedded within the local emergency ordinance. That was not true. The local emergency ordinance is item 22 is a standalone item, so could I have a motion for approval of that item and then we'll move on and talk about
Now, just read it really quick. An ordinance for the 25th declaration of local state of emergency related to COVID-19 and for other purposes.
Move to approve the 25th declaration of emergency.
I'll second.
Right, we got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I just had a question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Trying to get up there. Is the language of this declaration the same as it was last month, which is the same as it was the month before, in terms of mask mandates and everything? I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Yes. And yes, I am in favor.
Yes. And actually, that is a good note, Commissioner Hul, in that it's an opportunity we have now to remind the community that masking is in effect, given the high rise in COVID cases locally. So thank you for that. All right. Moving on to, well, move on 24. This is the change in location.
Move to approve item 24.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Link. Go ahead, Commissioner Link.
Um, yeah, when this Omicron surge, you know, when it became evident that it was really getting out of control, I reached out to staff at the Health Department to find out what was being done to accommodate it. And I was informed of those plans to move the testing site, which thankfully, it appears the kinks have been worked out and things are moving much smoother now. I also inquired about increased staffing capacity. You know, the big challenge is not necessarily, you know, finding a site. It's about having the people who are qualified to distribute those tests. And there are folks who work for the Department of Health who are out with COVID or under quarantine. So that's the biggest challenge. So no matter what providers are out there that might have, might be able to or may be qualified to administer these tests, do they have the capacity to meet the need of this surge is a big question. And the governor has released resources, apparently, National Guardsmen. And our local Department of Health has requested those resources. Last I heard, they haven't been granted them. I know they made a similar request back in the spring when it came to vaccination needs, and then the governor denied those resources and also pulled out some travel nurses out of Athens. So, you know, I'm wondering if this body could make a formal request to the governor's office or to our state legislators to see that we get some of those resources to meet the demand. Clark County is among the highest infection rate in the state. I mean, it is like dark maroon on the map. You know, and the students haven't even come back into town yet. We're, we're looking at a snowball. And we have a very low vaccination rate, which is terrifying. And our kids are going back to school in person this week. You know, we have no idea how many of the UGA students that are coming back to town are vaccinated or not, because UGA is not allowed to make that inquiry. It's going to get really rough. It's going to get really bad here in the next two, three weeks. Our hospitalization rate has not caught up with the surge yet, or death rate has not caught up with the surge yet. So I'm just telling folks to be prepared, and I think we need to get creative in providing resources to those alternative testing providers as soon as possible. So I'd like to ask staff to respond to that, to let us know, you know, even in an email tomorrow, let us know what resources we have, can we access those ARP funds? And get some, some resources as quickly as possible to the testing facilities within the community that, that folks in certain communities are used to turning to, our neighborhood health centers, our innovative health, health services. You know, all these alternative, alternative places where folks can go to get tested, knowing that they won't be charged. I feel like some folks in the community aren't even considering the Mako site because they've already seen all the pictures on social media of lines stretching all the way down the road. You know, they're desperately searching out of town for pharmacies and stuff where they end up having to pay, you know, 150 bucks per test. Can we get our hands on some, some rapid home tests that we can distribute at a reasonable rate, if not free, to our community? So I'd like to, you know, have management report back to us as soon as possible what we are doing and what resources we can make available to the rest of the community to accommodate this surge and to hopefully stave off some deaths in our community.
Well, I would say that, you know, testing, we would defer to the Department of Public Health as the public health, the entity serving public health of which you're on the board, for their guidance on, you know, strategies to, you know, bolster testing. And I know there's, there have been some requests to the state, as you mentioned. So that would be my response, Commissioner Link, on what we would do between now and tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, I know when it went, you know, in the initial phases of the pandemic, we were able to offer some resources to the Neighborhood Health Center to buy them a testing machine. You know, we were able to use some of those careers funds and distributed them to healthcare entities other than the Department of Health. So, you know, I'd like to know, is there communication with those other entities to find out what their needs are?
Not currently.
I think, Commissioner, we could certainly inquire at the local Department of Health level to find out a little more. I do know from them that, you know, one of the reasons that we shifted to Holland is obviously, aside from the physical layout of Holland, that they didn't have the capacity to run two sites, or Mako, their contractor, didn't have the capacity to run two sites in Athens. So I think we can pursue those questions.
Well, manager could, you know, let us know what, I mean, what do we need to do to exercise that outreach to other healthcare entities?
We'll follow up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Never mind. Thank you.
Any further input? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none, we will move on. And we have before reports, opportunity for the public to provide any input on items not on tonight's agenda. And I believe we have one or two folks in the chamber, so want to provide opportunity for anyone to provide feedback on any item not on the agenda. Same rules of input provide, just please provide your name and go ahead and begin, sir. We have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy New Years to you. My name is Michael Smith. I'm here to address a couple issues. But first, I would like to say that Commissioner Hamby's artwork wins a blue ribbon tonight. It's very nice. And I'm here to talk about a difficult issue, but I'm going to try to be civil and I'm going to try my best to be brief and see if I can get some clarity on this issue. On August 7th, 2018, a vote was taken regarding a planned development. In my view, the intent of the commission was three, had three major points on the substitute motion and the commissioner defined option. That was to remove several permitted uses from the planned development, including a hotel, to keep options open for more residential development in Phase One of the project, and also to try to work a community agreement so that the Phase Two green, greenfield development could perhaps also have a housing component. In my opinion, I think it's a fact that after the vote, the ordinance was altered. That alteration created a direct contrast to the intent of the commission. Also, recently, the interpretation stemming from that alteration misinformed the commission and violated the intent of the vote in 2018. I am not here to demand anything. What I would like is the answer from the five commissioners tonight on one element of my issues, and that is, was your intent to remove a hotel from the planned development permitted use list? Lastly, I ask that at least my family enter into conflict resolution with Athens Clark County Unified Government over this issue. There will be no direct legal action by my family towards Athens Clark County Unified Government. I, my family needs and requests tonight conflict resolution. Thank you so much for your time and have a great, great and safe evening.
Thank you. There anyone else here to speak regarding the item not on tonight's agenda?
Hey, good evening, y'all. My name is Bob Gadd from Winterville. I'm a retired paramedic with 43 years of public service. Thirty-six of those years were caring for the citizens of Athens Clark County. Last month, we made a request for y'all to equip the fire services to match their level of training that of advanced DMT. This involves the administration of IV fluids and several medications, many of which are life-saving, such as epinephrine. Since then, we have learned, since this, we have learned this is hopefully in the works with medical protocols being written and reviewed and a training officer with the fire department being sought after. This is all good news for our community, as I'll stay cautiously optimistic for its full implementation. In the spirit of transparency, a monthly status report of these changes would be appreciated. Some of you may have concerns about cost. Last month, I spoke about the need to have fire services initiate IV fluids. Since many of the record number of deaths of our citizens last year were trauma-related, IV fluids are essential. An EMS in a neighboring county pays $3 for a bag of IV fluids, $1.68 for the IV tubing, and $3.82 for the needle. So with other supplies, an IV can be established for around 10 bucks. A price list of other items has been sent out to you via email. As stewards of our community, y'all do a great many of good things for many of our citizens. By improving the fire services' medical response, this will benefit all citizens, since no one, including yourselves, is immune from ever needing to call 911 for a medical emergency. Thank you and good night. My friend and colleague, Sam Rappel, was going to try to be here tonight, but he got called in to teach school tonight, so he will be here. But thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to address any item not on tonight's agenda? We have a handful of business items. There, let's see, anything tonight from the manager?
No, sir.
Anything, Attorney Drake? All right, have a handful of things to enter into the record. Do want to note that there's a slight shuffling in committee assignments that are pretty easy to follow. So the Audit Committee is going to retain exactly the same membership, but with Commissioner Davenport as chair of that body. Government Operations and LRC are going to just switch one member from each committee to the other. So Commissioner Parker is going to move to GOC, where she is going to be chair, and Commissioner Edwards is going to move to LRC, where Commissioner Edwards will be chair. Do want to note to commissioners, appreciate everybody's feedback on items that you'd like to see pursued in committee work. Be looking, first thing in the morning, for a rating scale that I'll be sending to all of you regarding your interest in those items that you submitted to me, so we can prioritize those items based on your feedback. Also, want to make a quick note. We had somebody speaking at the end of the evening tonight about emergency management services and capacity, and I appreciate all those folks who've contacted us over many months. And as we're in the kind of early phases of preparing the FY '23 budget, I've asked staff to provide me with the information necessary, both on the staffing level and the capital cost level, to ensure that we have a more fully capable fleet of emergency management within our fire department. The other thing I've asked staff to provide for more feedback on is literal remediation efforts in our community, which could also include use of the transition center residents. Those would be paid residents who've moved from the corrections center into kind of a halfway house environment that's operated there, where they can receive regular pay. So those are two things I would just want to signal early on that I'm working on in the budget. Want to move on to indication for management of the Mayor Pro Tem process. That's a commission-driven process rather than mine. But as we begin this, I do just very much want to thank our colleague, Commissioner Edwards, for his steadfast commitment to kind of extra days and evenings and participating in cat herding activities that we're all familiar with here behind the rail. Lots of folks in local government talk about the typical five or seven-member local government body. We've got an 11-member set of elected officials, so that just means lots of honest conversation and back and forth and engagement. And Commissioner Edwards, you've been great in really lightening my load and I think honing the skills of this body as a whole. So I can't thank you enough for having been a partner in this work in that capacity, as I know you'll continue to be a partner in the work as a commissioner into the future. So thank you very much, sir. And Commissioner Edwards, I do want to turn it over to you so you can facilitate the nomination for a new mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for those kind words and my colleagues raising the roof on my behalf. I appreciate that. It certainly has been a job that I have enjoyed. I think it's an honorable position, and I certainly appreciated all of the answered phone calls and responded to messages that my colleagues provided. Y'all really made it a fulfilling experience as I really got to know you all much better. So this has been a tough position for me to step away from because I have enjoyed it so much. But as the mayor alluded to, I am going to be chairing the LRC, and so it's good to distribute leadership throughout the organization so everybody has a chance at the reins. And through conversation with colleagues, I have taken into account a few items of precedent that we've incorporated in what we've done over the years and thinking about, you know, folks who would not be up for election this upcoming year so that they would have time to devote to it, and thinking about members who have displayed a willingness to make those phone calls throughout the organization and sort of seize the work and recognize the personal aspect of this work, to really check in on people and try to cultivate those relationships. My mind fell to my colleague, our colleague, Commissioner Myers. And so with that in mind, I think this is going to be a process that we need to work through because, of course, subsequent to my mind falling on Commissioner Myers, it's come to my attention that another one of our colleagues is possibly interested in this role. And so I think that's great for folks to really want this, to want to serve. And so wherever we go tonight, I'm sure it'll be in a great direction. And it really has been an honor to serve with all of you and get to know you better. So without further ado, I move to nominate Commissioner Myers to serve as the next Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
I'll second that. Hello?
And I think I violated my own edicts to my colleagues by speaking so much discussion before actually making the motion. So everyone makes mistakes, but I'll defer to my seconded.
Yeah, I definitely want to second Commissioner Myers. And I also want to thank Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Davenport and Commissioner Edwards, who all reached out to me and asked me if I would be willing to take on the role of Mayor Pro Tem. And my immediate response was no. I feel it's utterly inappropriate for anyone who's currently running for office to hold that position. Not only because of the challenges to one's time, because I've seen, you know, how much work Commissioner Edwards has put into the role, but also just political ramifications. Election years can get testy, and I believe that, you know, everyone should have a, someone who's in that deliberative position should have a clear head. So I'm really honored by my colleagues asking me to do it, but my immediate reaction was Commissioner Myers is ideally suited for this role. I'm so thankful for her presence, her constant presence in the community and her deliberation, her objective deliberation on all issues and her ability to do the research and ask the hard questions. I mean, there are so many issues that, you know, I only thought about more deeply because of questions that Commissioner Myers asked. You know, she's got a lot of administrative experience and always adheres to logical process in any issue. So I'm really grateful for her presence on this commission and her contribution to it and her assistance that she's given me in some of the issues that I've had to deal with. So I'll second the nomination.
There. Any other commissioner who'd like to provide input?
I have my hand up.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I do appreciate the two years of service, Russell, that you've given us as Mayor Pro Tem. And I do believe that one of the main qualities for the Mayor Pro Tem is to have the ability to speak honestly and get to the point and so that when you're calling all of us, you can get feedback that's needed to be the leader of the commissioners in dealing, not dealing, but in communications with the manager and the management team, as well as the mayor, starting with testing the waters or getting some temperature check on our group. I have a different opinion on the, oh, I'm going to make a substitute motion. I nominate Commissioner Avita Thornton as Mayor Pro Tem. As I stated in my email to everyone regarding all the many qualities that are needed for the Mayor Pro Tem, it's important that when we're choosing this representative, that they can and do call everybody. I disagreed that, I mean, I think that we do have cliques in the group, but I have seen Avita reach beyond that on many occasions and do the work that it takes to communicate concisely with us. Also, another quality that comes with Avita is the chairing a committee of commissioners is totally different than any other assignment that we get out in the community. And I'm grateful that the mayor has made some choices and changes with the chairing of the committee leadership so that that experience is underway for new commissioners so that they, a year from now, have had that experience. As well as the longevity of being in public meetings. This is going to be Avita's 20th year as an elected official in our community, a black woman, 20 years ago that got elected. She's been elected five times. So this tells me the depth of her engagement in the community and the support that the community has for her. In that depth of knowledge is that she has a very diverse and varied outreach in the community. And so that's another reason that I think that it's important that we show the community that we also embrace the leadership among ourselves of a black woman who has been in the community as long as Avita has. And so I think that this is our time for 2022 is to show our community that we embrace the experienced voice of the elected official of the black woman that our community has put forward. And it's no easy task talking with all of us. And her conciseness may seem a little abrupt to some people, but I think that getting to the point is important for Mayor Pro Tem, for the discussions with us as well as out in the community. So that's my nomination.
And I'll second that, Commissioner Edwards. And I'll say, I'll just make, I mean, I'm not going to reiterate what Commissioner Wright said, but I think what you find with Commissioner Thornton is somebody that does know the community, that understands what people are facing in their lives. And her, I think, the 16 years on the school board has helped her with that. I mean, you know, transitioning from a school board member to commissioner is not always easy. And the school board members really have it a lot harder than the commissioner members do. You know, it's just not an easy job. And I think having been elected four times to that position certainly says something. And I think her involvement in the community over the years has said something as well. I don't have a concern with somebody who's up for reelection. I don't think, in the past, that hasn't, I mean, I know it's been brought up, but it's never, it's never been, to me, it's never been a disqualifier. I don't know why it should be. So at any rate, that's where I stand. Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to speak to the nomination of Commissioner Thornton? Commissioner? Anybody else want to speak to the nomination?
I don't know if it's proper for me to speak for my nomination, but let's face it, I don't. I'm never proper. But I think that, I think that I feel that we don't, I would like to think that we don't have a mirror of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. I felt that the things that I have brought to this body probably would not have been brought to this body if I didn't speak up. I know I do have an abrupt personality at times, but I do see where changes have happened because I have been outspoken. I haven't been polished. I've been in the valleys with folk. And we need, whether it's me as Mayor Pro Tem or whoever, we got to make sure that we include people. That's always been my intent. As a school board member, a commissioner, someone said that we're elected for two reasons. One is to either serve or be served. And I have always tried to serve. This is not no balancing act for me. I'm not trying to get points. I want to make sure that we are inclusive. And sometimes being inclusive means that you got to speak a little louder. I have no, whatever happens with this election, this is the first time since I've been on the commission that we've even had to go to an election. So I'm honored, no matter what, no matter what. And I will continue to be that person that I've always been. I've learned some things, and I think we all should. So I just needed to speak to this from where I am. I don't like wasting time. I like for us to be deliberate, and I like for us to have outcomes. So I thank you even for the consideration and will work just as intensely as I have. My goal is to represent the folk in Clark County. That's where I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so seeing no more comments on the nomination of Commissioner Thornton, perhaps Jesse, Commissioner Houle? Go ahead, Commissioner Houle.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I just, I feel like it's weird for us all to move forward with whatever we're going to do here and not say anything. So I guess I'll break the ice.
Speak to the nominations specifically, Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah. So I guess to speak to the points raised by Commissioner Wright, I'm not convinced seniority is the predominant factor here, but insofar as we might think it is, Commissioner Parker has actually been on this body longer than six of us, including Commissioner Thornton or Commissioner Myers. I do believe Commissioner Myers is a strong communicator and a solid bridge between the folks on this body that are often at odds. Commissioner Myers never abuses ad hominem attacks and always asks questions and makes points that are consistently on point and clearly worded and about the substance of the business we're considering. And I do think it was important to Mayor Pro Tems of the past, including my predecessor, Commissioner Neesmith, that it was sort of a conflict of interest to be serving as Mayor Pro Tem in an election year as well as a further drain on one's capacity. So I do think there is actually a fairly recent president that I take seriously to avoid someone in an election year serving in this capacity. I believe that's actually why he stepped down and Commissioner Edwards took on the role. And finally, I do think capacity is incredibly important here. In addition to the need for this person to be, especially on top of our agenda items and meetings and retreats, not only in crafting those things, but herding all the cats as everyone is speaking to and all the extra communication that that requires, this is taking on additional work. And that includes presiding over meetings when the mayor may be absent or recused, including the large number of executive sessions that we have to attend. And unfortunately, I have concerns about Commissioner Thornton at this time for this role just based on some of the conflict around, some of the concerns I've raised here, including the lack of attendance of many of our meetings and executive sessions. But happy to see where this moves forward regardless. So thank you.
Okay, so the way I'd like to proceed now is we have two nominations on the floor. So basically, we'll just open up the floor. If anybody wants to speak to their nominee of choice, go for it. If you want to support Commissioner Myers and speak to her qualities, you can do that. If you'd like to speak to Commissioner Thornton's qualities, you can do that. When everybody said their piece, we'll just close it down and we'll hold an election for those two spots. So would anybody else like to speak in favor of a nominee? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Davenport.
So this has been a tough one because I have two great ladies to my west who are awesome women who are civic leaders in the community. But what I'm looking for is someone who can work well with staff, with Blaine, with the partner heads, not be so, not be too combative, state your opinion or your fact and just move on. But also, I'm looking for that leader who is going to be out there in the community as well to, you know, express some concerns and express some of the issues that are coming up for agenda item in a civil manner and not so much of a controversial manner. But the most important part of the Mayor Pro Tem is that Mayor Pro Tem, you know, hurdles the, hurdles the cats of the commission, us. So, you know, someone who can work well with everybody, who cannot be, we're not going to be judgmental, not going to be biased, but, you know, understand other people's values and concerns and incorporate that when it comes to agenda setting and comes to the budget season. But also, the most important thing I'm looking at is just that commitment. Because I know, you know, God bless the mayor. It is a very thankless job and it's a lot of work. So the Mayor Pro Tem needs to be there, you know, when there's family issues, COVID issues, you know, other conflicts of interest, and someone who is dedicated to this job, that's, you know... that's, that's, you know, that's the person I'm looking for. With saying that, you know, I have no hard feelings against my colleagues, I have no hard feelings against anybody. I think hopefully you guys have realized that in the last three years, but how the vote ends or, or if, yeah, how the vote comes to play, I still love both of my beautiful women to the west and I respect all y'all and thank y'all for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Davenport.
Commissioner Edwards, I'm just gonna be real brief if you don't mind. You know, I, I, I keep hearing this, I keep hearing this term.
One second, Commissioner Hamby, just one second.
I'm sorry.
Before you go a second time, just wanted to be sure everybody had a chance to go first. Anybody have a first option? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Hamby.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be real quick. You know, I keep hearing this term hurting cats and it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of, I don't know if the word offensive is that. We're, we're grown people. We're not cats. And, and we know we each have our own ability to do, to do what we're doing and, and make decisions. We're not, we're not some sort of feral cat out, out in the yard looking for food. If you want that, you know, go visit with Kathy Orr, she'll, she'll show you and she'll feed you too. So with all that said, you know, I think the mayor pro temp's job is, is, is important. The mayor pro temp's job is to represent this commission to the staff and to the mayor. It's not to go along, to get along with the mayor or, 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 or the manager. I want, I want somebody in there that's gonna, that's gonna fight for this commission, that's gonna stand up when we see agenda items that, you know, are gonna, are gonna create some controversy or see agenda items that aren't helping us address the equity issue, that aren't helping us address our goals and objectives. And, and I think that's important. So, you know, you don't, you know, sometimes, sometimes you do need to, to have somebody that, that does speak to that. Oftentimes you need somebody that speaks to that in, in order to do that. Each one of you here have done that before you were a commissioner, come to the podium. And, and why do, all of a sudden do we disregard that when we're coming to a mayor pro temp spot? Sure, the mayor pro temp needs to be nice and communicate with everybody and all that, but, but, and that's important. But just as important is somebody that, you know, that's, that's able to stand their ground and, and say, hey, you know, I think you ought to run this by the commission before you put this on the agenda or, hey, I don't know that this is the right way to go or, I mean, we've all seen that happen. Commissioner Edwards, I know you have. So, so any rate, that's, I see Ovita doing that. And, and I think it's important, an important part of the job. I've, I've done the job. I've only done it for one year. I wasn't gonna do it again after that. I don't, I don't, I mean, no way. So, and, and, you know, especially when the budget time comes around, I mean, that's, that's, that's when you're really gonna, that's when you're really gonna need somebody to say, okay, like Commissioner Edwards done enough, let's move on to the next subject or, or to the next person. So I think, I think Ovita fits, fits the bill nicely for that. I think Athens would, would be well served with Commissioner Thornton as mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hamby. Go ahead, Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. I, I do, I do agree with Commissioner Hamby about like that one of the most important roles here is, is being able to represent the commission when dealing with the mayor, when dealing with staff as going out as our representative. And I think it's important to have, you know, a person who's gonna be really good at being able to put aside their own personal thoughts on a policy and be able to instead represent the policy of the entire commission, even if they don't agree with it. And I think that could be a really difficult thing to do. And we've seen that ha- happen over the last few years. I know that, you know, Commissioner Edwards has been put into tough spots having to represent rest of the commission because it was just part of that role. And so, and, and, and I do believe that Commissioner Myers will, I, I know Commissioner Myers can do like, I've, some of the calls that never, we've discussed things at times, you know, Commissioner Myers will bring up like, well, what about the other side here? Maybe we're not thinking about this other side and being very willing to go outside of their own personal thoughts or beliefs on a policy and, and talk about something else. So I feel like she will be able to represent this commission well as mayor pro temp, even if she doesn't agree with what rest of the commissioners want to do. I think that's a really difficult thing to do. And, yeah, so I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be supporting Commissioner Myers here, but I do appreciate those traits that we've brought up about Commissioner Thornton and about being able to, you know, speak against power and speak up whenever necessary. And I'm just glad to get to serve with both of them on this commission.
Thanks, Commissioner Denson. Go ahead, Commissioner Parker.
Um, thank you. Real briefly to expound a bit on something that Commissioner Denson said, you know, I, I do believe that Commissioner Myers is a person that reaches out to all of us fairly regularly. And in my conversations with them, we've always been able to respectfully disagree. And I think that is a very important quality in the mayor pro temp that even when they may not go with, you know, agree with the will of the majority of the body, being willing to convey that, that interest to others, I think is something that she is very ready to do as well. And Commissioner Myers, please excuse me if this is a misrepresentation of your experience, but I believe that eight out of ten of us work other jobs, given our delightful part-time status. And with the exception of one of those people being Commissioner Myers. I know that having grandkids, et cetera, is, is a part-time job in itself. See you shaking your head. But in addition to not running for your election right now, having more time to dedicate to this role than others of us who have to work other jobs to survive, have to do, I think is a great, you know, asset as well to ensuring that the role is fulfilled dutifully. So for those reasons, I will also be supporting Commissioner Myers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seen no other commenters. Let's just go ahead and hold an election. You'd like to vote for Commissioner Myers, just hold up your right hand like this.
Wait, there's a motion on the floor. We just need to vote on it. I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, the, for the rules, we're just gonna vote on both nominations. We got two nominations on the floor.
Okay.
I think we ought to do a roll call.
They've both been accepted. Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna have a roll call. So for Commissioner Myers, you can hold up a seat.
Well, there's a substitute motion by Commissioner Edwards, so I think we need to.
Yeah.
I think there's a substitute motion. It needs to be voted on first.
Just need to do roll call on the substitute motion, then we'll do roll call on your first motion.
No, we're just gonna accept both the nominations on the floor and both nominations have been submitted.
That's not the proper, not the proper procedure, Commissioner Edwards.
If somebody wants to make a, I mean, as the chair of this proceeding, it's my opinion as the chair.
I think people need to, I think people need to hear the roll call vote.
Okay, well, we'll do a roll call and then folks can vote for who they want to vote for. I just thought we could do a hand signal, it'd be kind of cute, but that's okay. So we have two nominations on the floor, so whoever you want to vote for mayor pro temp, just go ahead and say so, starting with District One, Commissioner Davenport.
You're muted.
Is this a substitute motion that we're talking about by right, Hamby, or how are we voting?
That's what we're wondering, dude, Jesus.
We have two nominations for mayor pro temp on the floor. And however people want to vote, whoever that they want to vote for, two nominations have been made and seconded. And so now we're gonna have an election. So people get to choose one or the other. There are two nominations on the floor for Commissioner Carol Myers or Commissioner Ovita Thornton. So let's start with District One, one through ten.
On the motion on the floor.
District One. I'm sorry. Go, so go ahead, start with District One.
So they're gonna call out who they want to vote for, is that correct?
That's correct.
Davenport?
Ovita.
Parker?
Myers.
Link?
Myers.
Wright?
Ovita.
Denson?
Commissioner Myers.
Houle?
Myers.
Edwards?
Mr. Myers.
Myers?
You're muted.
Myers.
Thornton?
Ovita.
Hamby?
Ovita.
Four Thornton, six Myers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you to the two candidates and thanks, everybody, for getting through that process. And congratulations to Commissioner Myers. And let's move forward.
All right.
So we have our traditional end of the evening opportunity for commission input on any item of interest. Go ahead and begin with Commissioner Edwards and then we'll just go through the numbers to Commissioner Houle. So Commissioner Edwards, you can go ahead right ahead.
Just like to thank my colleagues for their patience during that election. It just, I think the motion, substitute motion wasn't really the right. It just felt better just to have an election. You had two nominations, but thanks, that wasn't clear beforehand though. So I'm sorry that that wasn't made clear before, but it, it kind of came to me right during the meeting and it just seemed like an election procedure was, was the most appropriate. So we're not, you know, we're not technically voting on a motion. I just have one quick thing for Commissioner, sorry, excuse me, for Manager Williams, just of the Riverbend Parkway, I've heard from residents there who have requested that I ping you on cleaning the leaf litter in the, in the bike lane over there and on the street using our new leaf litter machine. So if you could please help there, sir. Happy New Year to everyone and crazy that we're meeting back behind these screens. Can't wait to get back in the chamber because I think things just work better that way. So, thanks, everybody.
Mr. Myers?
There's, you're up next.
Yes. I wanted to first start off by thanking staff in the attorney's office for helping cleaning up a blighted intersection lot at Gaines School on Lexington Road that people of have been complaining about. Went by there today and it just looked great. I also want to follow up on our desire to deal with our trash in our out of the city area private providers, because there's been a lot of concerns over on the east side and I'm sure on other sides as well about trash and recycling in particular not being picked up for week after week after week. So I hope we will get to address that in one of the issues that you're looking at. I also want to thank staff for all the work on the COVID testing and to encourage anything that we can do to make that easier for people out in the community. I know lots of us have been traveling, have family, the fact that it's impossible to find one of the home kits, that there are long lines. I think it's something we're all struggling with and one of the things we have to address. And I'd be very, you know, happy that we use some of our American Rescue Program money for that. And finally, I just want to thank you for all electing me the next mayor pro temp. I will work hard to be the best that I can and, you know, plan on beefing up on my Roberts rules so I can follow in Russell's footsteps. Thanks a lot and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Thornton?
Oh, thank you. Bear with me because I wanted to make sure I didn't leave anything out. I want to thank the staff for trying to keep up with us as a commission. I don't think we thank you enough. Twenty twenty-one, so I'm gonna read this. I was writing it because I wanted to make sure I shared my, my, my thoughts clearly. Twenty twenty-one has been a year of the old and the nervous and the young and the restless. But I admit, I was one of the young, young and the restless years ago. And I have used my years of experience and have learned that restlessness has no, has no real end to it unless you have it in, in, in mind. Therefore, I, I am recommitting myself to District Nine, made of a black, white, Hispanic and others. I re, I represent the haves and the have-nots and, and people who have felt, felt that their voice has not been heard. To articulate, Donna, one of my constituents, we have been felt like, it has felt like we were the red, redheaded stepchildren. But I do believe I have fulfilled my commitment with my campaign when I stated to bring community together. The District Nine has had more voice and more involvement because I've taken the effort to reach out and work with each and every one of them. I won't, this year I plan on not attacking people personally, but I will always stand up and speak up to what is not right and what is not, what is not beneficial for the underserved communities. We talk this talk, but let's walk the walk. I'm not going to back down, but I will be more cordial. I hate that we are so mystified by what we say and what we do. I will work with, and, and, and me knowing how this election was gonna go, so this is not out of order. While I was not voted as mayor pro temp, I will work with this commission. But be advised that things have to change. Things have to change. When we use the word supremacy, who are the supremacy people? And it's the people who have the power. And we got to encourage our, our constituents to have the power. It is not eleven of us, it's the people. So with that saying, I will continue to represent my district. I'm so thankful for staff. I strongly support this police department. I am not a Republican, I'm not a socialist. I am a card carrying Democrat, but my credentials do not define me. My party does not define me. I do what I think is right and I do the best I can. I will work with each and every one of you in the future, the best I can, because that's was, was what my oath was about. So I thank you for the support. I hope we understand each other and I think we can, hopefully we can move forward. Thank you.
Hamby?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to put in a request for Manager Williams. I've been, I've gotten a couple of emails today and some phone calls over the holidays about, about Republic not picking up the recycling. I mean, we've got contracts with these folks and if, if, if AAA and, and Curbside and whoever else can pick it up, then Republic needs to find a way to pick it up too. I know they talk about staff shortages, I understand that, but that's, you know, they're, people are paying them to pick up the recycling. So whatever we need to do as a county in order to get the recycling picked up for these folks, then that needs, that needs to happen. And that needs, somebody needs to get on the phone with Republic and remind them of their obligations to the people that have signed up for their service. Pick it up and then they can, and then the folks can change service to somebody else if they want to. But, but Republic needs to be held accountable for, for what, for what's, for what's not being done with their, with their obligations. So it's, it's, it's getting a little bit obnoxious and, 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 and people are getting perturbed by it and I understand that. And it's, and it's something that they expect this government to help them with and I'm, I, I expect it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I thank Commissioner Edwards for his service. I'm surprised you don't have more gray hair or if you have any, but I know it's been a thankless job, but thank you for your work and congratulations to Dr. Myers. I do want to mention that trash pickup is coming. I did ask for that to be in committee. We put that off on hold due to COVID, just the optics. I do have one complaint. I thought we had resolved this, but we're allowing the public to come into the chambers to make public comments while we hide behind computers. I, I don't sit well with that. We need to find a way to get the public to comment via webex. I thought that we had resolved that issue, but how do we need to be in a do we need to be in a chamber with the public or they need to be on the WebEx just like us um I will be petitioning to my commissioners to renaming jail road to Ira Edwards um Junior he has served twenty years in his community he helped um actually in that jail regardless of your politics um and your ideology I think we need to um recognize his commitment to the community and to the sheriff office by at least naming something of him um there's also a bridge I'd like to uh be working on um be to be named after the Barnett family and it'll be on East Broad there'll be more coming from that soon and Mr. Pickett will be doing a uh January twelfth and I emailed on my commissioner um a meeting about conservation in Athens Park County which I think is a really cool idea I pray that I have um you know support and um of course happy twenty twenty and finally on a sensitive subject there was an incident that happened to me last September um my lawyer told me to stay silent on it um and more more will be coming out of that incident soon but I do wanna thank you know um folks in the community who continue to support me and even the the people in the community who ridicule and criticize me and I still thank you because your your voices are deserving but um soon this situation will come to light and I will be going public about it on WGA soon and thank y'all for your support and I will be running for reelection.
Um I wanted to use this opportunity to plug the uh MLK Day of Service coming up on January wait uh January seventeenth um there's a lot of great opportunities um to serve the community it's a day on not a day off I hope that y'all will find something to do that's meaningful to y'all um I personally would recommend coming over and helping out the good folks at Joy Village School move into their new school complex in East Athens uh but there's lots of different things you can get involved with so um I think you can go to givepulse.com to uh look at the various um opportunities for service that are available and find something that works for y'all um and I think that is it for now yeah thank you happy new year everyone and thank you mayor pro tem for former mayor pro tem Edwards for your service as well.
Yeah I'd like to thank Commissioner Edwards too because he has been extremely diligent in serving in this role um for two years even as a brand new commissioner and I I've witnessed firsthand all the work he's put into it and recognize how much work is part of it and um and I'm I'm look forward to um working with Commissioner Myers as well um I kinda covered my big concern um in the agenda item regarding the emergency order um I'm hoping that staff can give us some kind of email update on where things stand as far as things we do have control over as a local government um you know what is the prognosis for some of the special events that we have coming up um um our our indoor mask mandate is back on but from places I've gone people don't seem to understand that that students aren't even back in town yet can we re-up our public relations campaign about that put some of those signs that we had up back in spring of twenty twenty um put them back out and well actually I guess it was summer of twenty twenty before we actually got around to passing a mask mandate um but if we can get some signage out and remind the community because this variant is extremely transmissible they're saying that everyone should be wearing N ninety-five grade masks um they're saying that incidental transmission is extremely common so just passing someone in a grocery aisle could get you covid or walking into a restroom stall after someone who's had covid has been in there um and you know granted folks who are vaccinated are doing really well um but people are still getting really sick even if they are vaccine boosted and you know I don't know too many people who can afford to get sick even missing just you know a few days of work um can really set some folks back um not to mention all the children out there who are not vaccinated not to mention other people who are immunocompromised or have family members who are immunocompromised I'm terrified you know every time I make plans to visit my father I I pretty much quarantine and test before I know I'm gonna go up there because he's on immunosuppressive medication um and I know there are a lot of people out there like that and you know whatever we can do in our community to reduce the risk of transmission make sure people are wearing their masks you know controlling the size of of gatherings where there might be super spreader events um and and really really getting the message across to university students because UGA is doing absolutely mitigate the spread of covid and um you know we're gonna see the consequences of that you know in the next couple of weeks.
Oh.
If the manager can you know offer some report on where we stand in in this surge.
Uh if I if I could jump back really quickly because Commissioner Lake made me think of something that I did want to express to y'all regarding covid we I mean we can tell people all day long to wear their mask but if they can't afford you know fifty bucks on Amazon to have them overnighted to them what are they gonna do um you know we can encourage testing but if you know folks don't have transportation to get there etc what are they gonna do so I say all that to say um I would love for us to consider just um a pure pure curing and doing some sort of distribution for high-grade masks as well as rapid tests that might be available at local libraries health departments you know public ACC gov facilities so people can really easily access the kinds of protection they need and the information they need to protect their community so hopefully hopefully we can have that conversation sometime soon thank you for reminding me of that Commissioner Link and my apologies for taking up too much time.
Thank you I appreciate it. I'm done.
Commissioner uh Parker thanks for saying that I think the transit would be great you know on the buses would be a great you know cuz you can imagine the um our our staff that's there and somebody's coming in with kinda you know could have an improved situation and the whole bus everybody died so um um however we can get that going I'll I'll be happy to support that as well happy new year to everybody and um I think that this whole covid wave thing has been um shocking shocking uh repeat uh and so um Melissa if you would get to where we can go ahead and have another Board of Health meeting and see what we can find out from them what we can do to help um with stuff I um covid was was a big part of our family holiday season I've spent my time in line I'm waiting for a result from a week ago so um I'm glad that we were on WebEx um and that that staff has done everything they could to get us um showing the public how serious this is that we're not in City Hall but um Patrick I agreed that and Russell that we do work better together when we can see each other but as long as our meetings are wearing that mask is is hard too so um I'm glad that this January we can have full attendance of cuz I wouldn't be able to be at City Hall due to my exposures that I had of positive cases of time so anyway happy new year everybody.
Um yeah thank you happy new year to everybody um I I did want to take a moment to um go ahead and mention another holiday that fell on January first that uh supposedly Athens Clark County Government celebrates now um so this is brought to me by a constituent and uh you know on January first two thousand sixteen then Mayor Nancy Denson passed a proclamation that designated January first two thousand sixteen and each succeeding January first as Emancipation Proclamation Day to honor the day that the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Abraham Lincoln on January first eighteen sixty-three then making all people who were enslaved free in all Union occupied territories uh this proclamation was brought to fruition in two thousand sixteen because of the work and advocacy of the Athens Clark County NAACP especially uh worked by Mr. Alvin Cheats and Mr. Walt Swanson and um this day may have just passed but I wanted to make sure that that we took some time to honor it as uh as this county government said they would during their proclamation uh back in two thousand sixteen um I also wanted to I'll really quickly agree with everybody brought up the um trying to distribute some of the rapid tests I know they've done these in in DeKalb County and Fulton Counties uh maybe that's something we could do on the west side uh in one of those parks over there where we wouldn't have to have qualified medical personnel they're just to simply distribute the the rapid tests to cars to just pull up cuz I think they will go very very quickly and there will be lines for those ones also but again we wouldn't need to have um that medical staff there and there'll be a much quicker process so I think that is something we should definitely look into and uh I also wanna plug the next District Five Town Hall which will take place virtually because of the pandemic on January twenty fifth at six p.m. this town hall will focus on the Arts and Community Resilience Awards that the Athens Cultural Affairs Commission distributed the artists after we funded them the commission funded them uh through the twenty twenty resiliency package and so we will hear from some of the artists uh who received those awards and explore the art the public art that they produced through the program and last I'll say uh January tenth is quickly approaching so I'll in my time let's just saying go dogs.
All right happy new year uh big thanks to staff uh former mayor pro tem Edwards um I wanted to request updates from staff on the contracts and status of the eviction prevention program and the first step program we're formally calling the sanctioned encampment um hoping that those things will be up and moving soon I was initially I think we were all hoping they'd be up and moving already um the uh folks who've purchased the property around the mall on Atlanta Highway have made some initial filings with our planning department and um they reached out to me and I was glad to talk with them over Zoom and I asked them to host the town hall so the public can start to better understand what they've got planned and and weigh in with with feedback so uh there will be a mall town hall on Thursday January twentieth at the mall um with covid safety precautions in place so that'll be Thursday January twentieth at the mall at six p.m. um glad to hear we're talking trash echoing Commissioners Myers, Hamby and and Davenport um you know the issues that we're seeing with service providers for those of us whose districts are mostly or entirely outside the loop it's all these private service providers and they're not unfortunately uh as consistent and awesome as our ACC Solidway staff is so I look forward to us reevaluating our approach of that service provision looking forward and um I wanna echo Commissioner Hamby's request to find a way to hold the uh private haulers accountable in the short term um I also wanted to cite my experience visiting family and friends in New York and New England over the holidays um vaccine requirements are totally normal in other states uh and I know we have a number of businesses in our community who have tried to incentivize one way or another and I'd just like to kinda put the call out for anyone who's watching that if you're running a business and and you're looking to continue to do the right thing that now is maybe a really great time to step up your vaccine requirement protocols it it was I've actually found myself uh routinely packing my copy of my vaccine cards so I can have it to show and I don't have to do that anymore but I did for a couple weeks it's a pretty easy habit to get in the habit of and I think businesses who are largely dealing with the public who's amenable to that already might might benefit from that and that might help us all mitigate a little bit what's going on here for the safety of workers for the safety uh and benefit of the general welfare uh generally and it's better for keeping a more stabilized economy um looking forward to our committee work assignments and the budget I just wanted to share that violence prevention and decriminalization of humans generally not just marijuana will be top of mind for me as we're kinda ranking things and I would ask others to consider those uh with affordable housing and living wages as well being priorities um and I I do I always think it's important to thank the people who stuck around till the end to speak to us at City Hall um I'm chewing over what conflict mediation can look like for people who have grievances uh with our institution and don't want to pursue formal legal action uh and I also would like to reiterate from the past my concerns about EMS and I'm really grateful for the mayor's announcement of that request of staff and really wanna thank Chief Scarborough and uh Manager Williams and Assistant Manager Edwards for meeting with myself and Commissioner Myers to discuss a lot of the concerns we've heard raised by uh members of the public about about our emergency response um and uh finally I'll I'll just share that I personally feel like it would be great for us to get back in person as soon as possible I feel like our safety provisions in City Hall are sufficient for mitigating risk for people and I think that we do better when we're in person um so with that I'll I'll move to adjourn.
Thanks Commissioner Hul I I do wanna make a quick note and I apologize for late notice um uh wanna make the public aware that both the Human Relations Commission and the Public Safety Civilian Oversight Board have applications open right now so please members of the public go to accgov.com um we've got uh more than two weeks to apply for those positions uh Commissioners I'll be given some detailed instructions tomorrow about how we'll be uh ranking those and setting up interviews on the twenty sixth and twenty seventh uh uh quick uh brief preview you will have a very quick turnaround to have to select uh nominees for interviews so I'll let you know that so you can put some time aside on the twentieth um uh also um do you wanna note we are virtual through the eighteenth I I like everybody I'm hoping that we see the spike in cases that we've experienced so dramatically over the last couple of weeks decline quickly as we have in some prior spikes but um I'll be making an announcement after the eighteenth given what we see of the first couple of weeks of this year so anyhow we've got a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Hul do I hear a second?
Say.
All right second from Commissioner Edwards all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right beautiful evening and happy new year.